Let us be connected. Um, best our resource persons and members, grand and wisdom continually best each and every one of us, Lord, that we may do what we want us to accomplish for this meeting. Um, also pay for the people who was affected by this rainfall and we pray for um fair weather. All this we ask in your name.
There is a motion to uh dispense the review of the minutes of this meeting and we approve our the adoption of the thing uh here in objection motion is carried. We now um. We'd like to acknowledge the uh presence of the members of this meeting. Our feeling that you attend today, that you are senior vice chair. Alasaki, my ladies, our opponent Anthony Colanda, Royal Junior. Uh, my chair. Our senior vice chair. For the work of health of the government of the city. Honorable, honorable, honourable. And we are in high voice. The man. Uh, our feeling to the high years. Our honourable, honourable, honourable. Thank you. Deputy Majority Leader. Department of Health. The Chair of the Department of Health. Honorable, the stockholder of the House. Uh, for the six district of the land. Honorable, Senator, Mr. Kimo. Uh, the community of the city of the city of the city. Honorable, Emilia. For our party, the party of the year. Honorable, the way of rest, rest. Team of Vice Chairman.
Oh, come on, get it, Sana.
Uh, Vice Chief, Honorable, Daniel, the one of the six district of the world. The honourable, honourable, Romero, Vice Chairman, Phil, Junior, of the University of the City of Nakat City. Honorable, the one by the party. One by the uh, Honorable, Lord, and so on. The rest is the area of the city. Honorable, the honourable, the long district of Payaw. Honorable, the honourable, the honourable. Of the long district of the one. Honorable, the Royal Salo. Uh, the party of the Bayan. Honorable, the obama or the party of the city. Part of the one. Honorable, policy. District of Kalikpaderos. Vice Chair, Honorable Maria Grisha Arenas of the District of Tandasinan. Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar, the sixth district of the city of the year. Honorable, Luz, V mercado. The first district of the leader. Honorable Fernando, the third of the day of the third month of the year. Honorable Maria, the long district of the year. On the list of the owner of the year. The second is the holiday. Honorable, Honorable James. George, um, Junior of the art of the swamp in Longport. Deputy Majority Leader, Honorable, General Palma, the first district of the Juanca de Bugai. Uh, Honorable Maria Del Mar Macino of the Department of W. And Honorable Maria Joamina, the lady of the row of the fourth district of the Luna. Thank you very much for your presence and uh. Uh, they will now directly uh from second to uh, who has always been the source person.
Thank you, Chair, my honourable members of the meeting. In attendance for today's meeting, the following from the Department of Health. Assistant Secretary, Jerry O'Naran. Uh, Doctor, Gloria, the leader of the last call, Mr. Sanchez. Fernandez, the very important, unfortunately, Fernandez, the third say, and Aquila, oh, Kideo. Is. A dia in the list of the chapter. From the Philippine Health, issues of population or health. Uh. Chief of the Officer, very named, A D D, Osangos. Uh, Vice President, very good, Vice President, very good. Mister Raymond. Mister Kobe, um, Miss Kobe that. You are the one, Mister Fernando, and only that is Roy, the one. From the Department of Social Security. Health. By zoom. As a high wind. Do not. And this, Mary Ann, Arcanda. From the D B M, also by zoom, Attorney, I was born.
Then I'm not, I won't be bit so good, yeah.
From the Department of Science and Technology, Miss Catherine. Diva, Eric, and Mister Vincent, who goes. From the um Professional Association Commission, the Honourable Party of the Pagas. Uh, the honourable Gloria, Unla. The honourable um. Mary. Go and uh. The honourable Roland. Hunan. Also, the honourable, the one, the show. And party. From the National Policy Commission, Attorney Natasha. Oteya and Attorney. If, for radio. And from the Private Hospital Association of the Philippines, Doctor. Who, Pascal, that will be all the owners. Mister Chair.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed with the first uh, with our first agenda, allow me to uh, be the help of this meeting. Good morning, uh, this is the speaking guest. At the Philippine Congress, after the second regular session, I would like to congratulate the honourable members that we give honour for the very productive and fruitful work that this particular session. Through our collective hard work and perseverance, that we achieved March 11th, the legislating vital measures that will address our country's health emergency preparedness. Of great significance are the priority measures mentioned by the President in the first day of the day. Each report by the House of Representatives on third reading and subsequently transmitted to the President on December twenty twenty two. These are the bills established in the tender for the disease prevention and control. The virology and vaccine institute of the Philippines and the medical research board of the health emergency auxiliary response team. The committee on health likewise responded with dispatch to the passage of letter priority bills, particularly the bills providing for the establishment of an OFW hospital as well as the bills granting power to the President to spend ill health premium contributions during public health emergency. Most of them in the House of Representatives, including and subsequently concluded with the President for their action. The Chair wishes to inform this office by that the bill establishing the specialty centers in DOH hospital in all regions of the country and in government-owned and controlled corporations, which were ratified by the Senate and House of Representatives on June two twenty twenty three, has been transmitted to the Office of the President for this decision. Several other bills of vital importance were approved in the first schedule of fashion that the committee on health had to strengthen the country's priority health programs such as wonderful immunization, comprehensive renal replacement therapy, comprehensive tuberculosis elimination, trans fat treating the disease, prevention and treatment of serenity and more. The committee also approves bills that seek to establish as well upgrade and expand hospitals and other health facilities such as the DOH hospital and capacity rationalization, rehabilitation and modernization of the Philippine General Hospital, Giliatic Hospital, research, Giliatic Hospital and research institute. The top filing of political drugs and medicines, amendments to the hospital essential act and several other local bills that seeks to establish and upgrade hospitals and health facilities in various parts of the country. With all the legislative accomplishments I have mentioned, this representation as Chairperson of the Committee on Health sincerely thank and congratulate the honourable members of the committee for their job well done. For the second regular session, the committee on health has to pray is focused on post-pandemic preparedness and response with the lifting of the COVID nineteen public health emergency. And this is affecting his imperative for the committee on health to exercise lawmaking and legislative oversight function in the implementation of the universal health act with special attention to primary health care, health financing and human resource for health. The legislative oversight over the implementation of the mental health app is also in order with the end view of identifying and legislating policy goals and reforms. Without prejudice to other important deals of national and of significant significance, send it forward to another productive second regular session. Thank you very much. So. We now proceed with the uh, our agenda for today. First is uh, the briefing on Bill Health on the on the. So we will allow uh, Doctor Albert, uh, the team group uh, uh, for his briefing and under which uh. We will just to uh, interplay or ask questions uh, will be given if we occasionally do so, uh, and the. Concept, so you can have a proper and orderly uh, sequence of uh, interpretation. Uh, before we proceed, I'd like to uh, recognize the presence of honourable Mark Law of the Long District of uh, Valley City. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and uh, on zoom, we have Honorable Maria Angela Adler here, the fifth district of uh, the town. Honorable, Jason Victoria U of the second district of San Longo, the school. We have Honorable Marie Mary Missy, the high employee of the second district of the city. Honorable Charisse Anne Hernandez of the Long District of Palamba City. Honorable, Project La Scari of the fifth district later. And Honorable, Carmelo John, the team, Vice Chair, uh, of the first district. And the field up in this meeting on consider that on screen, I can read the slide show, please. Sorry, uh, leave up. So I go to the end. Right aside, please, and slide show. Thank you so much. We come from the state of the nation address where the president said, and I quote, "We are working for a more direct, efficient delivery of services through integrated primary care providers and networks in partnership with the L G Us and our partners in the private sector." These shall, of course, be supported by what is now a better and more efficient field health and code. Hence, uh, Mister Chair, honourable members, this is a presentation on what the role of field up is, which is the National Health Insurance Agency in delivering universal health care through what we refer to as private health care. Next slide, please. And hopefully you will see on the screen. It's a photo that represents many health programs. This was taken in two thousand nineteen. I was stopped, or was stopped on creation of any law. And there was this, I presume, a family seated in the middle of the aisle, this is so long time avenue. Here is to me, there is a bowl, there is soft drink bottle, there are spoons at the back selling what appears to be junk food. There is uh, blood water receding with her, right? I'm, I'm thinking the man probably has a cigarette. Mister Chair, this photo we are showing to illustrate that universal health care is not an individual health program. It is away from things. It is a way of restructuring the very system by which we run health in the country. Next slide, please. And if we are to look at the situation, this is actually out in the part of the year two thousand thirteen, but I presume that we can generate the same data. We are looking here at the causes of death according to age. On the next axis would be the age of the individual Filipino and then on the Y axis would be the proportion of deaths caused by that disease. And how do we interpret this? If you look at the younger side of the age group, you have a lot, of course, of maternal and adult disorders, nutritional deficiencies, communicable diseases, diarrhea, respiratory, other common infectious diseases. However, Mister Chair and honourable members, towards the older age groups, we have more and more non-communicable diseases which are chronic. And uh, as the honourable Chair, who is since of the Doctor Rose and many of the members of the committee, chronic diseases are more efficiently managed if we can prevent them in the first place. Next slide, please. We are also coming from a situation where you are seeing on screen a heat map of the out-of-pocket payments of countries in Southeast Asia. The darker the blue color, the higher the out-of-pocket payment. Pongera, the minabaya ng ating mga pilitan Filipino, literal mula sa kanilang mga busa. And in two thousand eighteen, the Philippines was gaining close to around fifty percent out-of-pocket. This is something which actually uh, we have known for so long and which serves as the inspiration or rather the challenge for the universal health care act. Next slide, please. The biggest question is, what will be the roles of the local government units, the Department of Health, field health, and let us not forget the private sector when it comes to implementing universal health care. Next slide, please. If we try to summarize all the problems that we have, we have an oversimplified side here that raises the multiple financing flows of money coming from our population, which are the orange lines coming from the right. They go to same tax, they go to premium payments, they go to out-of-pocket, and they land in different pockets of government. There is, of course, your line item budgets to the DOF, which goes to the DOH. There is the budget that goes through individual local government units, which by the mandanas here, we now understand more than before. And then there is, of course, premium payments up to the state of the health. The moral of this side, Mister Chair, honourable members, is the more financing schemes there are, the difficult, the more difficult it is to manage and the harder it is for a single payer to actually exercise what we refer to as maloxomy or the ability to influence prices. Meaning. Kung sana ang plan ng field health, kung inuwasan ni ninety ninety five, is sa dapat 'yung pinakamalaking nagbabaya. Sa langit kita ko natin dito, marami pang ibang pinagkadagdanan at kabayaran sa pagustugan. Kaya mahirap ko para sa aming, para sa biyang babalikin natin ang episode. Now, on the other side, dun po sa mga green, the green arrows at the bottom, which represent the service delivery. Our patients can actually access any particular level of care. Kung gusto niyo po ng isang patient na nagduduga, yung si PGH, wala pong makakasa, di po sa dun pupunta. Kaya't ang kanilang sakit ay buot si one na kayang contain ng tobe. At hindi kailangan na di-belted, pupunta siya sa E R. Bakit? Kasi wala siyang mapuntahan sa kanilang lugar. Wala siyang madalila ng doktor, di si one's ng gabi, so pupunta siya sa E R. Classic story po 'yan, Mister Chair, honourable members. And next slide, that is one of the things that we are trying to fix.
Di ako pa diretso kayo, wala ko'y passport.
Even before the U H C O, we already did the slate seventeen seventy five, the project act on the National Health Insurance Program. Actually, meron akong slide na namakain pero hindi ko nawi-discuss. Alam naman po natin na it started way back in the nineteen sixties with Medicare. And this National Health Insurance Act, next slide, please, is present on the concept of risk pooling. On the screen here is an illustration representing five individuals. Yun kung ba't ang naka-lokaloko na kulay kula, at yun kung may kapansanan na awit siya na kulay kula. So, namin sila ay limang tao na madalas magkasakit. Ngunit mababa lamang ang kanilang kinikita, dalawang isang lamang 'yung green na pesos sa inyo sa taas. Ngunit dahil sila ay sakin, pag umuna sila sa ating mga ospital at clinic, 'yung kahun sa kanan, five na isang, 'yung tali ng minagastos, kaya nangyari, nangilipat 'yung dera, na wala sila na magastos, namin mas mahirap pa sila, eh mahirap na nga sila tabigentid. Next slide, please. Risk pooling allows us to collect funds from those who can pay and who are healthier, 'yung mga iko na nakalagay sa slide na 'to, kahit lima lang ang gagamit. Yan po 'yung basic principle ng ating National Health Insurance. But as originally designed in nineteen ninety five, it really has been meant for inpatient hospital care. Yun po sinasabi 'yung insurable interest. Kasi kapag hindi siya insurable interest, at asimulan natin siyang bayaran ng field health, eh isipin niyo po, 'yung limang may kula, mangingyari lahat ng mga tao na nakalagay sa slide na 'yan, maging kula, mauubos 'yung dera na buwakaso, mauuwalan ang dera ng pambayad ang field health. Now, interestingly, next slide. Mayroon kumasok tayo sa usapin ng primary health care or primary care. I will explain, of course, the difference in the two. Meron tayong tinatawag na capitation. Sa nangyayari ngayon, wala sa kanywa. Meron tayong national government na nagbibigay ng subsidiya sa field health at ang field health ay nagbabayad sa tinatawag na consulta package provider, 'yung kung iipit sa nakikitra sa taas. Ang pinikaybentong sa kanina, 'yung sa kanina is magkakasakit ka muna bago ka babayaran ng field health, 'yung kung facility. Ngayon, babayaran ng field health 'yung facility bago ka magkasakit. That is capitation. And Mister Chair, honourable members, one important thing we have to identify, we have to remember when it comes to capitation is hindi dapat inaatago 'yung capitation rate ka na tao. Example, alam ko natin na sa current consulta package, five hundred pesos per head ang capitation rate of a public provider of a private seventeen. Naginano po tayo sa public, kasi alin mo ma, kapag five hundred. Forty percent of five hundred is two hundred pesos. Yan po 'yung first crash na sinasabi na tinabayan. Kapag pinaginig po 'yun, hindi hihingi sabihin, 'yung two hundred na bigay ay gagamitin lamang para sa isang tao, kasi siya ang naka-assigned dun sa mga na 'yun. Hindi po, para po siya risk pooling, tinanong nila siya sa bank account ng consulta provider. At hindi lang lahat ang ating mga direxter, hindi lahat ang ating mga kababayan magkasakit, hindi lahat sila kulay kula. Po 'yun na sila nakikita natin sa screen, which means there would be funds in the account of the consulta provider that can be used for those who actually fall ill. So, pero rin risk pooling ang nangyayari. Ano ang mangyayari dun sa hindi nagamit na pondo? Kaya po may hihingi pang, hindi po 'yan para tumoto sa akin siya. Pero may araw na babalik dun sa outpatient primary care. Pwede pong gaminang ito ng ating local facilities para bumili ng dadagdag equipment, para bumili ng dadagdag gamot, para taasan ng sweldo ng kanilang mga nurse, mga midwife, mga doktor. Hindi na po 'yan ibabalik sa field health, hindi po 'yan upunin ng field health, sa inyo na po 'yan. There are safeguards, of course, against underutilization because one of the pitfalls of capitation is, makanaman ang tibid 'yung facility, kasi alam niyo na sakit niyan 'yung dere. Pero po tayong mga performance measures para sinagad po 'yun na nagideliver pa din ng serbisyo ang mga doktor. Next slide, please. So, it comes to universal health care act, which was legislated, signed into law in two thousand nineteen, right before the pandemic started. So, talagang nasubukat siya. Next slide, please. At talagang nakita natin kung ano 'yung mga kadinahan ng ating sistema. Kung natin isasummarize ang universal health care card sa isang mahabang sentence at technical, hindi pa kaumangin niyo po. Primary care and essential public health functions as the core of integrated health services delivered through a health care provider network with financial risk protection through strategic purchasing that promotes predictable and sustainable payments. Luwag pa tayo tumukong ng pansin sa mga selita na nakabold, 'yung primary care, 'yung integrated health services, 'yung healthcare provider network, at importante po sa amin sa field health, 'yung salitang strategic purchasing. Pero bago ang lahat, next slide, please. Bago ang lahat, let's be clear on our terminologies. Pag sinabi pong primary health care, may tatlong elements po 'yan, hanggang sa speed po natin na isang WHO definition. Ang primary health care, element number one, includes integrated health services with primary care to meet people's health needs throughout their lives. Element number two, addressing the broader determinants of health through multi-sacral policy and action. Element number three, empowering individuals, families and communities to take charge of their own health. To simplify things, Mister Chair, actually, 'yung primary care is a subset of primary health care. Why is this distinction important? 'Yung tatlong bullet point, trabaho po ng buong health sector, particularly ng Department of Health. Try again. 'Yung mga kong field health nakapokus dun sa first bullet point. Kasi po binabayaran namin 'yung mga serbisyo, individual-based services. Next slide, please. And let's find out what those services are. If you look at the U H C Q, ang isang tanong is, ano bang binabayaran ng field health? Ano bang dapat 'yan pagtagastusan? Next slide, please. Ayaw sa ating batas, sa universal health care law, at the essential of kumaliin that, but this is a direct copy of section six of Republic Act one, one, two, three. Nadito po lahat ng key elements, immediate eligibility and access, preventive, preventative, curative, rehabilitative, palliative, lahat na ng klaseng health care, sinama medical, dental, dental, emergency health. Pero either as population-based or individual-based services. Makalaga po 'yung kahatihan na 'yan, kasi kapag ang isang serbisyo ay pangmaramihan, population-based, DOH po ang nagbabayad. Kapag ang isang serbisyo ay para sa isang tao, gulat ng CDC, cholesterol, and yan, o kaya operasyon, ospital, 'yan po ay individual-based health services. Meron tayong tama tinatawag na comprehensive outpatient benefit, itinatag ng batas within two years of efficacy. Medyo nalit na ako dahil nagkaroon ng pandyan, yeah, but that is actually the mandate by which field health grows its directive to deliver or to implement primary care. Now, ano po 'yung primary care na sinasabi? Meron tayong primary care provider na siya ang navigate or coordinate or an initial and continuing point of contact. Dun sa slide nating kanina na maraming araw, dapat kerong isang tao, isang doktor, nurse or midwife, kung sino po na ka-assigned na siya ang tutulong sa ating mga kababayan, kung saan ba siya dapat kumunta, kung kailangan niya ng serbisyon de kalitan at kanyang kayang bayaran, po libre kung mangyayari. Next slide, please. And what are the services that we can have? If you look at the next slide, please. 'Yung next slide 'yan, pag nakita natin na 'yan, ang daming services, pero it's along the continuum of care. Kung higitin namin siya parang proactive, kayo natin mamatay, 'yun 'yung kulay kula. Gusto natin, dun po tayo, Mister Chair, sa kulay derde, na tayo ay malusok at tayo ay productive, buhay at ah, dumugulong sa ating bansa. Ang dami pong mga steps, wala akong saberde papunta sa kulay. Ano po ba dito 'yung mga steps na 'yan? Diyan sila sa ating primary prevention, secondary prevention, tertiary prevention, na tanan po 'yan, ilagang gastusan. Kailangan ng kabehahan. Next slide, please. Kung tatalinig naman natin sa nangyayari, halo halo, merong inpatient, may outpatient, it is a common misconception that outpatient is only primary care. But as the specialists would understand, nangyayari po 'yan sa secondary care and tertiary care. And sa next slide natin, etong next slide, eto po 'yung importante. Individual-based services are paid for by field health. Population-based services are paid for by the Department of Health. Next slide, please. How do we pay on the part of field health? Meron po tayong 'yung mga kulay green na box, dun po sa ating kana ng slide. Meron po tayong 'yung case-based payments, 'yung on-case rates. In the future, coming soon, meron tayong diagnosis-related groups at magiging global budget. Meron rin tayong Z benefits sa sinasabi. But for the purposes, Mister Chair, honourable members of our discussion this morning, po tayo nakatuwol sa consulta, 'yung capitation na sinasabi. Next slide, please. Kailangan, uh, may escape po. Yan. Kailangan lang po nating mapusapan 'yung slide na 'to, dahil isa po sa mga kariniong tanong is bakit sa consulta, thirteen namang na laboral na twenty-one na gawat ang binabayaran? Meron po tayong sinusundan, ayaw na rin sa ating batas. Unang po, ang nasasabi kung ano ang dapat bayaran is hindi ang field health. Ang DOH po 'yan, 'yun po 'yung standards of care pursuant to section twenty-seven of R A one, one, two, three. In the same law, meron mo po magsasabi kung ano ba ang dapat bayaran ng dera ng gobyerno, ng publiko, at kung ano ang dapat hindi bayaran ng public funds. 'Yun po 'yung Health Technology Assessment Council pursuant to section thirty-four eight of R A one, one, two, three. At sa kanan po mga karini sa amin, ang field health. But according to section twenty-one of Republic Act seven, seven, five, as a vendor, 'yung po shorter namin. Kailangan po namin gumawa ng tinatawag na actuarial studies para malaman kung meron mo tayong sapat na pondo, at kailangang parating pang pondo para mapayad tayong pinakalaking trust usin. 'Yun po talaga ang focus ng field health. Next slide, please. When it comes to network contracting, we also prefer to Republic Act one, one, two, three, the new U H C A. Sa ngayon po, nag-aacredit pa ang field health ng individual facilities, kaya nga tawag po namin is consulta package provider. Pero baka napalita ngayon po, na nasisimula na tayong magnetwork. Hihingi sabihin, kung dati, 'yung mga. Ibig sabihin, kung dati 'yung mga isa, dalawa, tatlong R H Q sa isang lugar, individually naa-acredit siya, nangyayari 'yan ngayon. In the future, 'yung tatlong po 'yun, isa na lang kapausapin po namin, kapausapin namin si city mayor, kung itupuhay or the city or si provincial governor, kung itupuhay isang provinsya. Yun po ay tayo sa batas, na kasulat po. It promotes efficiency, it actually allows also the genuine interpretation of local government autonomy. Pagpapayad na lang po kami, nasa inyo 'yan po sa local governments. In the case of the private sector, po meron silang juridikal entity nagagawit or corporation para manage care organization. Sinanapo, ayun ako ang bahalang of this side, po paano gastusin 'yung kapahiran ng Field Health. Next slide please. Kasi po mahirat pong ipagusa sa, next slide please. Mahirat pong ipagusa sa ten thousand eight hundred ninety-seven facilities. It really is a very big transaction cost on the part of Field Health. And it also actually steps on local government autonomy. As the U H C law tells us, as the U H C law mandates us, it is the local health system who is in the best position to actually exercise supervision and control over these local facilities. Kaya ako may local health board na makakalaga po nun. Dahil 'yung budget, kung paano ganitin ang tinabayan ng Field Health, hindi na po unay mo sa atin, pati 'yung hadiran, hindi na namin papakailangan 'yun. Ang makakalanan po dun is ang ating local government. Next slide please. At kung ten thousand ang facilities, mas marami po ang doktor na acredit for three thousand five hundred plus, including other professionals. So, you can imagine, Mister Chair, Honorable Members, that we are trying to be more ex-ang presidente, more effective, and more efficient, and we are respecting local government autonomy in this sense. Next slide please. And that local government autonomy is demonstrated in this slide. This is the healthcare provider network referred to by the universal healthcare app. Our discussion focus 'yung mga consulta, look sa the green bar, sa ilan po 'yung primary care, yun tinatawag na primary care facility. Na meron siyang, siya 'yung pinagpupuntaan for most concerns na ating mga kababayan. Next slide please. So, in terms of summarizing everything, the policy considerations based on law, it is clear that the primary care provider is now the focal point. And this primary care provider needs to establish referral contracting or service agreements with laboratories, with pharmacies, dun sa kabilang particular lugar. Field Health in the future, it's coming now, will only transact with networks of these healthcare providers. And we will pay not through what we call fee-for-service o 'yung classification na binabayaran, but now this time through performance driven close ended and respective payments in accordance with law. Highlight ko lang po 'yung pinaggulang bullet. Payment mechanisms by the networks to their members are not fixed by law and they vary according to your own policies. Nasa autonomy po 'yan ng local government. Next slide please. So, really, really, kung meron tayong slides na parang naging i-grow in U H C, this is a simplified version of the U H C schematic diagram. Next slide please. Nasaan tayong si Field Health, tayong inpatient benefits. Next slide please. At hindi pa po dalaanan kung magkano ang ginayaran in terms of pain for medical, next slide. And also surgical, yun po 'yung available tax and figures po 'yan sa ating tax and charge online. Next slide please. Ipagpaumanhin po ka ngayon, nandyan tumating sa main topic, but I have to explain the entire context so that many of the questions can be easily answered later on. Consulta has thirteen laboratory tests, actually, nagulat po kami. Non-essential na president itself, mention thirteen, duna na lang mabilin niya 'yung mga report card. At di alitan niya twenty-one medicines.
Oo, kinatay, sabi ko ano 'yung mga sakit.
This is probably the first time in recent history, if not the first time, that the chief executive is in the state of the nation address, went into the general details.
Ush, talagang.
General policy. Next slide please. And because the chief executive is very interested, it is our honor to actually go into some details. What do we need to do? Ano po ba ang kailangan gawin ng ating mga kababayan para manggamit ang consulta benefit? Major steps? Magpalihistro, magpa-authorize, at magconsulta. Yun po registration dito, next slide please. Is different when it comes to the registration of Field Health. This is a frequently asked question, pero Field Health member niya naman ako eh, bakit hindi ako mag-register? Kasi po kailangan ko makilala ng doktor, 'yung pasyente na kalagahan niya. Ang primary care is buong taon. Isang doktor lang ang kapausapin niya. Ilala siya, alam ko ano 'yung kanyang mga sakit, kung ano 'yung kanyang mga peculiarities nila sa isang tao, at siya 'yung tuturo kung sa ospital siya, that's why we need to register again for consulta. Do they have to pay anything? No. Frequently asked question, yun 'yan, no, ipagbayad na naman, additional though. Is it part of the benefits of Field Health? On screen are the different methods of registration, kwening sa call center, community health, assisted hospital, ng P cares, at sa aming local health insurance office for NIO, through I T systems, updated primary care module. Next slide please. Pati ang L G U or 'yung mga local organizations sa Deposka, pwede magkaroon ng assisted registration. I assist po nila ang ating mga members para maging Field Health Consulta beneficiary. Next slide please. Etong isang halimbawa na tinatawag na tinatonsuta registration form, dahil mahalaga sa batas na kasulat, actually na pipilitan ng pasyente kung saan niya gusto ma-register. Hindi pali 'yung sakilitan na hindi ko pa sa R H N, hindi po sa kabila. We have to respect what is written in the law, that it is the choice of the Filipino kung saan siya. Next slide please. Mga ganun meron tayong authorization transaction code or K T system, kasi ayaw po namin ng mga ghost patients. Gusto namin siguradong, dun po 'yung pasyente, kaya kami tinitignan. So, meron kong step na tinatawag ng A T C. But in a forthcoming policy, you will actually start accepting photographs. Kung wala siyang A T C, magpa-selfie. Serioso, selfie talaga being, katapihan siya ng doktor, take sure na siya score sa database, hindi rato ng tao. Kasi naman ayaw namin maturo ng ghost patient. So, kailangan, meron tayong taong kausap. Next slide please. Can we get now to the health assessment or consultation? Dito natin, napatinawin na hindi ibig sabihin may thirteen laboratory tests, ay, hindi din natin 'yung thirteen laboratory tests na 'yun. Dahil hindi very clear, one of those tests includes a tox smear. Hindi po ako mapapatox smear, Mister Chair, dahil wala po silang ipapatox smear sa akin. But I use that graphic example, pardon me, to illustrate that not all the lab tests are indicated for particular patients. Kung mga pasyente, may kailangan ng D C G, ipapa-D C G siya, kailangan ng X, ipapa-X. Pero hindi siya entitled na all thirteen tests gagawin sa pasyente. Kaya 'yung gilangan, hindi dapat ibisit, ulam 'yung five hundred, kasi thirteen test, hindi po lahat ng thirteen test gagawin sa five hundred. At hindi na five hundred ang entitlement ng isang tao. Entitlement na is 'yung buong pondo na nanguun sa provider. Tapos yun pong prescription naman, madalas po tinatanong sa amin, ano ba 'yan, balas sa isang bigay or may tenex para sa buong taon? Ang sagot po is may tenex para sa buong taon. Next slide please. So, in summary, ang ating process flow, registration, authorization, transaction code, health assessment, and consultation. Next slide. Kung bubuhin natin sa isang schematic diagram, pasensya na po, I need to give you top piece to the honorable committee members and the chair. Pero kung ano ng po is, kailangan natin ang monitoring and evaluation framework, eto po 'yun. Lahat ng steps, lahat ng mga actors ang involved sa consulta, eh, kawan po 'yan. At kawang-kawang po 'yan, pwede nating assignan ng indicator. Wala sa number registered, sa number na nagkaroon, uh, first patient encounter, sa number nila po consulta, sa number nila di naglaboro po, sa number na bigay ng gamot. Para masagot natin ang tanong na kumagat ba ito, dun natin po, kulugugan sa ating monitoring and evaluation framework na 'yan. Next slide please. Konti na lang po, dahil po, yun po nating benefits. Next slide please. Yan po. Alam na po natin po, five hundred for the public provider and seven fifty for the private, may franchise po nayo. Sa ating mga honorable members na gamay at sanay, sa polisiya po namin, meron po kaming forthcoming policy, nakalistin na po namin 'yung pro-ita dun sa first trench. I see some heads natin, kasi nakinig po kami, bakit tayo man magiging, kasi pangkatay na 'yung, 'yung circular na 'yun, hindi nila siya ibig sabihin, kapag nag-register ang member ng December, something that eight percent na nangyayari makukuha niya, how about the forty percent? So, inarista po namin 'yun sa forthcoming policy, malaki ng bilmaan, President Pan, Dede, Despan. And uh, 'yung sinasabi ko kanina, nakaraan natin siguraduhin na nini tayo, takitit sa gubigay ng serbisyo, yun po 'yung performance targets. Nililang namin kung kailan ang nagko-consulta, ilang laboratory services ang ginawa, at ilang gamot ang dinis test. Based on what we anticipate to be the legislative logic profile or the expected kumbaga laboratory utilization rate, prescription rate for a particular area. Next slide please. Now, when it comes to licensing and certification, uh, to our recall, hanggang two thousand twenty-five, hindi pa required ang ating licensing na Field Health, uh, na primary care facilities. So, para meron tayong window para paramihan ang bilan ng consulta providers. But starting two thousand twenty-five, magkakaroon po ng certification by the Department of Health. Madali lang po naman, meron po 'yan ang mga steps na karekin po sa screen natin. Next slide. Now, how does a facility become a consulta package provider? Yan po 'yung final circular number, I will not go into the details, but the circular number is twenty-two zero two-one. Next slide please. And one favorite question is, what if I am a laboratory center or diagnostic provider? How can I join in this step or call consulta? The answer for here is through a service level agreement or through a contract. Hiniilala mo ng ating polisiya na kung ang isang primary care facility ay nangangagidahan ng tulong sa mga.
Pero bakit si?
Sa farmacia.
Bakit si ano, immigration?
Pwede po siyang kontratagin para siya po ay maging partner dun po ating A T P. Pero hindi na po si Field Health, Mister Chair, ang maging ipagusa dun sa mga laboratory or mga botika na 'yun, kasi marami po sila. Palubag down na naman po tayo sa transactions, at hindi naman tayo makaprocess. Nung marami pa naming ibang functions, including of course inpatient. Next slide please. This slide just shows the many types of contracts, kwening kontratagin 'yung doktor, kontratagin 'yung botika, kontratagin 'yung, kayong ghost. Pati 'yun dyan, ordinary, pati 'yun, it's a very, very operational, but this is highlighting, yun pong red arrow na natin. Yun po 'yung kung kunin namin, pro-kunin po 'yung Field Health na makabayan ng ating capitation. Marah, yun pong consulta package provider ay mga kapagkontrata dun sa mga iba kanya, partners. Next slide. Skip na po ako, pero sa batas ko 'yan, next slide. Yan po kasi 'yung usapin sa capitation, eto na po 'yan na po ako kanina, na nakuusap ko lang po na 'yung capitation is prospective, compared to fee-for-service na after the service or retrospective. May mga different advantages po 'yan and disadvantages at 'yung buhay, parang consider, kaya dinigay natin 'yung capitation, as sinabi rin 'yung batas. Dapat ang ating bayad is already performance driven close end and prospective. Next slide please. Skip na po ako, next slide please. Because at the end of the day, Mister Chair and Honorable Members, we want to be a strategic purchaser. We want to spend our money, our Philippines money properly, to influence the quality, efficiency, and equity of health service delivery. Next slide please. If there is a question on what is the future of consulta, what is the directions, this slide perhaps answers it. You have probably heard, Mister Chair, Honorable Members of terms like consulta B C P N, consulta plus S D G, may terms na sulong, may terms sa U H C, and many other terms. We can simplify them into somehow like an operations research, an experiment if you will, Mister Chair. There are three intervention arms, A, B, and C, and there is a control D. Yun po 'yung sinasabing B C P N, simulan nung po dun, letter D po 'yan sa slide natin na ito. Meron na po tayong identified L G U's, na pilmaan na po sila ng S L A with Field Health, 'yung bakiyo kataan, give a ras. Eason, South Cotabato, and two private sector entities, Polymed and Mapex. Ano po tinatay ba ng consulta B C P N sa consulta? Iba po siya, kasi si consulta B C P N pre-taken. Si consulta namin, kahit sa dinin namin, pre-take siya, in practice, reimbursement pa rin siya. Kasi hinahanap namin 'yung registration information. He made it simple so that kadi 'yung mag-submit, but because COVID insists na kailangan meron tayong tinatapat na service or tinatapat tayo na action. So, ang response po namin is to make it as simple as possible, let's register on basic information. Whereas, 'yung consulta B C P N, meron po kong COVID guidelines din na bas, uh, earlier this year, around, no, better of this year, around June, na niho authorized, etong specific sites na 'to, to try out pre-taken based on uh, capitation, I think thirty percent for the first cash. So, yun po B C P N is an ongoing experiment, hindi po siya nationwide. And I say this very carefully because it sounds attractive kasi pre-taken siya, but there are several operational issues that we have yet to find out. That's why we are managing it very carefully. That's letter D. Letter A naman po, yung sa new Asian, tinatawag nilang sulong program, pero naman po, kahit hindi pa namin alam kung ano na siya at ng L G U's. But one thing is for certain, hindi dapat umulit ang isang L G U depende kung meron na siyang intervention arm. So, 'yung lumabing sa B C P N, 'yung libang L G U, dun na po sila. Iba naman po 'yung maging mga L G U sa letter A. Yung letter A, eto po 'yung proposed intervention pong experiment po. Yung consulta plus S D G, tsaka 'yung Field Health gamot. It will result net effect in an adjustment in the capitation rate, kataas po 'yung capitation rate. But Mister Chair, Honorable Members, I would caution again that this is an experiment. Hindi pa rin po namin alam kung may magiging effect sa services, kung paano 'yung payment systems, at kung 'yung I T payment status stable, compared to the current consulta. So, that is intervention A. And it is going to happen only in four L G U's. Intervention C, dun po tayo sa consulta, as we know it now, yun po ang ating inaopelit, and which I'm actually heading as the Vice President for Primary Care. But we will do intensified technical assistance and occupational support. Ibig sabihin, magkakaroon ng in-house call center na kung hindi ma, actually, it's already running, na may support ticket, hindi magbayaran si kanya to, dun natin tumutok para dadaan ng post namin, para kung ano na 'yung problems doon, ikakasit natin sa mga ibang sites, which is now letter D, 'yung ating control sites, everyone else. Very last slide, next slide. And how we manage all of this? We have what we call a U H C value chain, where hindi ibig sabihin na meron tayong polisiya na may gari target siya. Yun po 'yan kila mga yuwa. Para kumunta tayo sa kanya nung araw natin, basta sigurado nating mag-improve ang help na ating mga kababayan. Wala sa polisiya, kailangan niya pera, may budget. Wala sa pera, pera tayong spending plan or uh, ang ating work and financial plan. Wala sa work and financial plan, dapat eto ay nakatuwon sa mga dapat ilin, sa supply side, at mga dapat gawin para maka-generate ng demand. At pag nangyari po 'yun, ay magtatagpo 'yung dalawa, yun po 'yung theory natin, magamay ng primary care ng ating mga kababayan, at mag-iimprove ang kanila sa resulta. Hindi po ko na tapuston, dapat dito ay merong information and FIFA na babalik sa polisiya. Yun po mga na yellow box, yun po 'yung mga polisiya ng Field Health na nakatuwon dun sa ibang-ibang bahagi na ating U H C value chain. Next slide please, dyan po ang ating last slide, and I welcome questions po from the committee, thank you Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Lino. Uh, before we proceed, I would like to also leave, um, basically, this is. Our members of the meeting of this very present, our vice chair, and Honorable, uh, Peter Miguel of the second district of South Cotabato. Uh, Honorable Joseph Gilbergilado of the second district of Terevisina, and Honorable Maria Angela Garcia of the district of Alaska. And on Zoom, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable France Comarre of the third district of Kastan City. Uh, Honorable Doctor George Lara of the third district of Terean. Honorable Christian Alexi Thor, the third district of the world. Honorable Arnie the Big Rocket, the fourth district of Kikinon. Honorable Carolyn Tenchild of the party list A. Honorable Maria Vanessa Alentado, the second district of the world. Honorable Jungen J. De Sae of party list Pusong Delong. And Honorable Paris Christian of two-one, the Lord, Lord of Summer Seconds. We now recognize, and here the floor, uh, to Honorable, uh, people. But no, yeah, certainly, thank you.
Um, sinangan, Mister Chair. Well, um, first of all, congratulations to Field Health, finally natin ang damagong, um, very complete steps uh, towards implementing primary care. Medyo naule, um, kami natin ang Field Health na ready to lead ang pag-inpresent ng mga primary cares. And um, very important, po sa mga kababayan natin ang ini, um, it's an important pillar of the universal healthcare law, kasi dapat ang our Pilipino ay registrado sa isang primary care provider, whether public or private. In other words, lahat ng kababayan natin dapat mayaong primary care provider. Okay, so, first question, um, so, ikonfirm po lang, um, so, sa twenty twenty-three, ang budget para sa consulta package is maximum twenty billion. Tama, kasi total Field Health budget for twenty-three. Diba? Kasi total Phil Health budget for two thousand twenty-three is one hundred billion. Twenty billion is for premium subsidies, twenty billion is for special dedicated packages, including primary care. So ang maximum na pwede nasa yan per consulta sa tao two thousand twenty-three, twenty billion. So gusto ko malaman is magkano ang nahalaan per consulta?
Mister Chair, may I defer to our Chief Operating Officer for the figures? Uh, Tony, uh, Eddie Sanz. Mister Chair, person, honorable members of the community. As you the protected, then protected twenty three out for consulta. We have eight point forty-seven billion for the twenty twenty-three, six percent, honorable member.
So ano ang target na then na equal over the individuals?
Mister Chair, um, the, the target is still as many or all. Uh, but realistically, we are seeing that the numbers are hitting up slowly at this point, and this is our challenge.
It's as simple as eight point seven billion divided by five hundred, kasi kami di so naman, also the plan.
Doing the math, Mister Chair, it is divided by, if we assume everyone is covered, then you're looking at sixteen point eight million.
Okay, so, diba, by the end of the year, na sa, na kita sa Kongreso, sixteen billion Filipinos may registrado na dapat sa isang primary care facility, okay? Sa ngayon, July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, ilan na po ang registrado sa isang primary care facility?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. As of June thirty, the total number of registered individuals, uh, seventeen million two hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred twenty-four.
Actually, okay, so, I have an idea.
Registration, Mister Chair.
Alright, at the So So, for this year?
For this year po 'yan.
Actually, if she did a card yet.
Equal registration, Mister Chair.
Okay, so, I mean, um, so how much? So, na, na, as of end of the base?
Yes, po.
So, congratulations. Alright, so, magkano na na gasus video?
Current spending, uh, Mister Chair, uh, for total payments thus far is one hundred seventy-four. Round it up, one hundred seventy-four million. Uh, round it up.
Already far exceed the, your target of sixteen million individuals. Eh, sabi mo, kulang kulang eight billion, edi dapat tapas eight billion na ginastos nyo.
But madam, uh, yes, I'm sure.
Over the first branch is about twenty percent, edi dapat kulang kulang four billion. Pero baka one hundred billion palang naga-gastos nyo.
Precisely, Mister Chair, that's why we will wait for the registration. We are fully aware that the process is not yet.
One hundred billion, support billion na expected, na gaso, so may explain.
Opo. 'Yun po kasi registration, nakadivis na po sila, pero hindi po sila na the first patient encounter.
Also, serye. Parang hindi manuwan eh, hindi po na sinabi nyo sa akin ngayon. Kasi dapat upon registration, meron first patient encounter, may bayad na agad. Kasi lahat ito nakahinay sa bayad, kasi iexplain niyo sa amin, kapag madanggap ng facility 'yung bayad, may pigibang kaso na picture, right? 'Yun ang gagamitin ng facility, kung ginagamo, kung dinan equipment. 'Yun ang gagamitin para mahikaya ng ating kababayan, ay, pero palang gamot doon. Therefore, pupunta kami doon, alam namin, nakamay kami ay, um, pwede, nagpaan ng facility na yun. Absent that, takot na rin mga taong pupunta doon, oso Igasin si Orison na explanation for billion worth of resources, at one hundred billion lang nandun. Ay, talagang takamay ng mga taong pupunta sa facilities.
Correct, Mister Chair, and this is the reason why in the forthcoming policy amendment, which will come out this month, correct?
Hindi namin hanapang den, Albert, ako nga namin, bakit malayo 'yun actually expect as a reality?
Kasi hindi po nila ginagamit 'yung regulation.
Hindi, ang tanong sa, hindi nila ginagat, 'yung dapat.
Tell you po, yes, yes, Mister Chair, because uh, hanggang hindi po na kakaroon ng first patient encounter, hindi po mababayan.
Hindi nga 'yung first patient encounter.
Exactly, uh, Mister Chair, 'yun po 'yung aming tinutuglan ngayon. Uh, it's a property mix of, uh, hindi una ma, hindi nila alam dahil of registrations na this plan. Hindi po siya 'yung registration, there is a component po na 'yung pasyente 'yung mismong lamate, at luminaw po 'yun. But there is also
Dapat, kayo mismo, this is your program. Baka hindi dapat, kayo ang nagtugoy non, right? Hindi dapat, naghiyan na di ate ninyo, right? Dapat, um, ang mga facilities ay tinutulungan ninyo para masigurado magkaroon ng first patient encounter.
Opo. Kami natin po kami doon, Mister Chair, natin po 'yung mag-i-trust namin for the rest of this year, actually, to bring up the F P E rate.
Okay, so ano, ang assurance namin, napagdalin nyo sa amin, malapit ang ating first budget period. Napagdalin ninyo, hindi po sa amin, in two weeks' time, ay, 'yung first branch keyo para sa seventeen million na registered, ay, dapat naibayad na.
Opo. So, uh, to believe in, dapat po, Mister Chair, is aming mapataas, 'yung mismong bilang ng F P E. And another thing, uh, this is something which we are working on already, 'yun pong I P system, uh, the data don't be next. Dapat maayos siya. Um, ako po, Mister Chair, personally, I am supervising what we call this system enhancement that has to be implemented.
Okay, so, Doctor Albert, napakadito na presentation mo, just make sure that papalit nyo dito sa Kongreso during the budget hearings, ay, maganda din ang report nyo sa pambayad. Napakadami ninyong pera. 'Yan ang problema ng Phil Health, bininiyo maibayad, ang napakadami ninyong pera. Ang dami naming ibinabasa in na budget. At 'yung pera na yan, ay, hindi na nakailangan ng ating kababayan para sa pambayad na kanilang, um, ekskusin pagkailangan. So that's where you are needed. So, pakiusap na nila dito is ibayad ninyo.
Yes, Mister Chair, opo.
Correct. Number two, Mister Chair, um, I, I thank Doctor Iko. Super responsible po siya, Doctor Chair, para, Mister Chair, um, I asked her help uh, para sa pagkoriyan sa amin private doctors, um, sa amin district. Kasi very curious eh, on how, um, they can register dito sa ating consulta package. So, um, wala pa isang linggo, pati ang D V is Doctor Igo. But unfortunately, not one, not one of our private, uh, doctors. And they said, so, I think that's one of the problems dito sa ating consulta package. Um, hindi ko alam kung if seven fifty is too small, or maybe it's the trench chain. That again is a problem. Kaya nga sinasabi ko, kailangan ibayad ka agad, that pigibang is really the key. Kasi ang sinas, ang sinasabi ninyo, pagka may paliwado po, Doctor Albert, talagang risk pooling is the key. Kumbaga, for capitation to work, kailangan maibayad ka agad, kasi kailangan imanage ng doktor, 'yung pera ipa-prompto sa kanila eh, because that's the only way that this business model will work. So, hindi 'yung ibabayad ka agad, talagang, mukha pa 'yun 'yung business model. But it might seem that our private providers have difficulty, um, maybe appreciating that of a system as number one, or number two, parang itakot talaga na seven fifty. Kasi kapag mag, um, danpas kayo na ipamayat on the show, is sa amin talagang is at least one thousand pesos, one thousand, one five, diba? So, maka talagang, 'yung seven fifty, ay, maka talagang hindi talaga makakapag-attrakt ng private providers. At patitingan natin ang numero, forty-three thousand accredited providers, kailangan ka?
That's po.
Private, so, paano magkapasya ang, ang providers mo kung hindi mo hihikayatin ang private providers? So, magfi-fail ang ating sistema kung hindi natin isasama ang private providers dito sa ating equation. So, ang ating plano moving forward, ano ang, natutubin natin in this situation? So, may problema ka sa trench chain, may problema ka sa amount, but at the end of the day, ang dami ng pera, diba? So, pero nagangcover from Congress, and at the same time, sa akin pati akala, ang dami talagang pera ng Phil Health sa reserves ninyo, at ang daming 'yung pera sa na iniinvest, diba? So, so 'yun, um, anong, anong commenting ito? So, siguro pisahan natin dun sa, um, sa, sa, uh, private, uh, providers, ano ang, ilan ang private providers na involved sa ngayon, let's start with that. Number two, um, ano ang kanilang government to seven hundred thirty pesos? Um, number three, uh, paibang panagan kung, uh, magkano ba ang, uh, ang convert ng, ng Phil Health sa ngayon? And number four, um, ano 'yung, ano 'yung plano niyo for the next two, three years? Pagdating sa consulta, kasi sa ngayon po ang nagkukukus ko sa public. But obviously, it will need to involve private, diba? So, I know that you have sandbox sites, you have a couple of private providers involved at the moment. Um, so pwede niyo bang tinatag sa amin, 'yung, um, ano ba 'yung minds those nyo ba dito sa private providers in the next two, three years?
Thank you, uh, Mister Chair. With the indulgence of the chair, at the second, please flash slide fifty-two, 'yun po my table. And that will greatly aid in responding to the question of honorable, uh, Kimbo. So, atong nila handa 'yun slide, uh, honorable, uh, Kimbo, Mister Chair. Uh, the data that we have as of two thousand and twenty-three, there are two hundred forty-nine private providers out of a total of two thousand one hundred sixty-one. Ibig sabihin po, uh, the ring nila pong percento, twelve percent, ang ating mga consulta package providers are private. And this actually aligns with what the honorable Kimbo has mentioned na mapapa. Eh, alam natin sa, sa, ating arbitration, at taas po, 'yan po, okay, slide show po, show slide, thank you. Sa ating bilang ng arbitrated, arbitrated providers, kasi marami po talaga ang private, so putin ang mismatch talaga, kasi twelve percent lang 'yung ano. So, in this, we are looking at two possible hypotheses. Dalawang, uh, posibleng daliran kung bakit hindi nagpapaligtis ang private providers. Tama po ang si honorable Kimbo na, number one, baka nabababaan sa capitation rate. I assume po natin na one time na, that everything else being have equal, baka 'yung rating problema. 'Yun po 'yung susubukan po po lang tong tinatawag na sulong program. 'Yun pong sulong program, ay, on, on slide po, on display, 'yung consulta plus S D G, kung dati any Yeah, kung hindi po unep, I mean, it might pick up nine hundred, maga at ng four hundred, sa po magagaling 'yung four hundred na yun? Ngayon po kasi 'yung tuberculosis, tsaka M H I V, may salis na sand alone packages. Hindi po po in 'yung mga benefitism yun sa primary care, 'yung components for primary care into consulta. Kaya po siya tinawag na consulta plus S D G. 'Yun naman po consulta, sorry, 'yun naman po Phil Health gamot, magkakaroon ng vouchers para sa mga pharmacies. At kaya po tinawag na net effect is, dahil magkakaroon na ng sagot ng Phil Health 'yung pambayad sa gamot. 'Yung pera na dati nila kasus para sa gamot ng ating mga providers, mabigat na nila for others. So net effect, kataas 'yung ating capitation rate, but that is only one of the possible reasons. The other possible reason, which ako po personally, I'm hearing from my own colleague doctors who are trying to get on board. Pero sabi nila, nilapil naman, ang daming papel is transaction cost. So 'yan po 'yung arm letter C, 'yun pong, uh, handholding, consulta handholding. Kasi, um, inarapat po ng team namin sa local ng Phil Health, the project management team for primary care na tina natin 'yung mga proseso, baka naman masyado maraming ni re- acquired. Baka naman 'yung isn't doing business, subit lang hindi pa rin internet, this type of consulta, kaya hindi sila na po on board. So, so that will be through intervention arm C. 'Yung intervention arm B, uh, 'yun po sinabi ni honorable Kimbo na, 'yung business model ngayon is prepayment. Dapat nakukuha nila 'yung cash, pala 'yung cash flow nila maayos kasi walang sinong panggastos eh. 'Yan po 'yung prepayment, tong intervention arm B, consulta B C P N. Now, we are cautiously implementing this in separate L G Us and with the full consent of course of the chief executives. Because as with anything in health report, anything in medicine in particular, hindi namin ma-anticipate lahat mong possible effects, whether positive or negative. So dun maladami po 'yung ang gawin sa tinatawag na saan ba, sa sabi nila, mukulang talaga tinatawag is private sites. So, 'yun po 'yung mga private site na nagyari, may A, may B, may C. Thank you, sir.
Hindi kaya, hindi kaya dahil na pagbagal ng pambayad ng Phil Health eh. So, kumusta na ang mga problema sa pambayad ng Phil Health sa hospital? Kasi, kumini rin to 'yung mabilis pambayad sa mga hospital, at dun sa muli namin hearing, Mister Chair, diba? Ang dami naming pinag-usapan na mga, um, balances na mga, um, hospital payments, baka 'yun din yun. So, kuna to to ang masila sa pambayad ninyo sa mga hospital, siguro iniisip din nila na baka ganun nila pambayad nito sa consulta. So, I'm sure you din yun.
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, may I defer to our Chief Operating Officer for the information on hospital payments? Mister Chair, sir. Sir, person, honorable members of the community. President, Mr. Person, we are evaluating and paying hospital fees at around twenty-seven days. Under the law of interpretation, they are required to pay within sixty days. We are led to report that we are paying, uh, within twenty-seven days, national average, Mr. Person, honorable members of the state. Mister Chair, and, yeah, yeah. Mister Chair, why may be allowed?
Uh, yes, honorable Marco. Yeah, uh, due to the capitation, uh, let's say you assume, uh, public insurance now. Let's say you, you assume that, let's say, one hundred people are insured. And the premium payment is, let's say, five hundred pesos. Whether this five hundred goes to the hospital or not, are you paying the total amount of, uh, let's say, five hundred times the number of patients that are supposed to be insured?
Thank you for the question, Mister Chair, and, uh, at the moment, look at ranching, as in a survey. It's not the entire five hundred, you did the date, it's initial forty percent po, mo na. So, two hundred out of the five hundred, you po first ranch.
Regardless of the number of patients that will go to the primary care, uh, center, you have to pay the entire five hundred pesos for certain number of patients, whether they go or not. Whether treated or not.
Yes, Mister Chair.
So, in that case, uh, it's going to be easy to pay, because you know exactly how much you gonna pay for certain number of patients at five hundred pesos. So, they might only create fifty percent of the number of patients, but they get the total amount, that's how they'll get recovered. Uh, you know, if that's the case, there is no reason why it takes or not to pay, it should be easy.
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, and I, I fully agree with you, sir, and that's actually my mandate. Uh, we are encountering a lot of payment problem as when it comes to operational details in the I P system, which we are resolving, for example, 'yun pong statement of accounts payable, minsan nakakaroon ng mismatch. So, we have to correct those, 'yun po 'yung transactions that are behind, uh, kumbaga, in the back room, so excuse me, bago po maglabas.
I think what, what is important is the original list that will be submitted to Phil Health should be, you know, validated first, so that whether they come or not, the, the, you pay, uh, uh, yeah, they show like, you don't say po, ano, basa 'yung original list. And all people should be aware that they are already being paid by the government when they register the names.
Fully agree, Mister Chair, uh, one of the issues that we encountered in, uh, last year is when we did photo registration. In cooperation with local government units, we did batch registration, uh, nakalista po in an Excel file. However, the lists that were submitted to us, pero mga entries na hindi namang pala existing, or baka na nagamali ng spelling, ng name, etc. So, these mismatches, 'yun po isa sa mga daliran kung bakit nagkaroon ng issues. But we are working on it, this year po, ang usapan na po namin na talabas the polisiya. Let's not rely on the lists, we will rely on the F P E. 'Yun pong mga napakita na, napasyente, para basa na napakita siya, bayaran na, hindi na 'yung hindi pa andeng pagdalad.
Uh, hindi na dapat mapapitay, actually, naka-risked na sila. You pay the different premium for this number of, uh, patients, whether they come to the center or not.
Really, where the end gone?
Mister Chair, we need your full support because the operational quality does not allow this. The public insurance, eh, uh, you know, you are not at all interested whether they, they consulted or not. You have this report of this, you know, uh, this is, uh, these are the people who are supposed to descend, go to the centers uh, and, uh, get themselves treated. Then, uh, you can, every year, then probably every, that's how you validate, na, na, and you, every time, uh, name is submitted. Then, you take picture, are you gonna do that when you have the, you have less people in, uh, in, with them?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we fully agree with you, sir, and we appreciate it, yes, but now for the record, but the reason why we cannot go there is COVID, the commission of college will respect, let's not allow this to happen.
Well, we need to come out with a policy and let people, uh, you know, agree with the policy. Then when we have the policy, they will follow, they will audit you based on the policy that we have. And if this is contrary to the policy, then they will disagree. They'll come out with an o, on, with an audit finding, uh, you are not complying.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and actually, that is intervention B. In the table that we showed earlier, yun po 'yung consulta P C N. They did, uh, mas paturi for now on a limited scale, dun sa limang L G U's, saka dalawang private. Kaya po siya, dun po ang experiment, kasi meron po talaga COVID na, nandai po talaga namin, and when this cycle off, we are now proceeding. We are hoping that learning from the experience in those five L G U's, which includes back there, Mr. Chair, we will scale this up and we will progress po na, you see, it work in Baguio, it work in Sao Paulo, it work in Kesar. Then we can spread it to the whole Philippines.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, next time, we invite COVID so that they would don't, uh, it don't sige ng gawanan then, and we will get their confidence.
Thank you, thank you, honorable Mr. Chair.
Uh, you have a power. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Kimbo, are you, um, you.
Um, yes, um, just, um, the, uh, investment of this repair and, uh, very important, well, we will chat to you with, um, the fund balances. Um, kasi, uh, I know that earlier that, um, ang dami pang pera ng Phil Health, Mr. Chair. So, um, ganun na kanina, um, eight billion ang nakalangan para sa equals in the package for twenty twenty-eight. Base sa kanilang, um, na, uh, na-register na, dapat four billion plus na dapat ang naibayad na, hundred billion pa lang, so ang dami na dapat na pangnaibayad na. But at the same time, ay marami na talaga, on the, on the basis of how much Phil Health is investing at the moment. At sa ating pagkakaalam na sa may share, um, they are investing over four hundred billion pesos. So, like, um, Adriani, uh, like, can you please confirm that? Um, there's over two hundred billion in reserves, um, and over four hundred billion in investment, um, income. So, tama ba yun, um, Adriani, like? So, nakapapunta kasi siya the insurance company, di ba? So dapat tinagastos siya para sa kalusugan, so dapat na nag-iinvest. I mean, sabihin yun, um, may sobra-sobra silang kapirahan na, yun na nga, di ba? So, eh, ang dami-dami nilang dapat na binagayan sa mga, sa mga hospital. And, and right now, pali sa mga, um, health centers, right? So, parang napaka-displaced na mali, dun ganong kasi, um, investment income. So, could you just kindly respond, uh, Adriani, like, before I do, uh, uh, part of this, there is another.
Mister Chair, person, honorable member, Kimbo. Mister Chair, person, the data that was then to be, Mister Chair, person, was as of end of twenty twenty, Phil Health has a total asset of four hundred fifty-five billion. And the reserve fund is two hundred seventy-six billion, Mister Chair, person, honorable member.
So, Mister Chair, four fifty-five billion, that's investment. So I can, do we have the exact, um, the exact, uh, line and, uh, financial report? That's investment income.
The total assets, Mister Chair, person, is four hundred fifty-five billion, honorable member, uh, honorable member, Kimbo, and the reserve fund is two hundred seventy-six billion.
And how much was, um, investment income? Or how much, um, do you invest? How much assets are invested?
Mister Chair, person, please explain, uh, my, the data that was given, Mister Chair, person, means, I'm not sure if, I will compare this to, uh.
Okay, um, as far as I recall, it is four hundred fifty-five billion that are in instruments.
Uh, another question is, magkano liability? And then, uh, accrued liability of, uh, Phil Health as of the end of twenty twenty-four. You have an asset of four fifty-five billion, how much is your liability?
Mister Chair, person, yes, Mister Chair, person, present. I do not have the exact data, Mister Chair, person, I apologize. But we will provide, uh, committee, as soon as we have these, Mister Chair, person, please, honorable member. Please provide the committee, uh, on the example. Okay, um, Mr. Chair.
So, indication. Mr. Chair, I'll just wait for the guidance on the total amount that Phil Health, um, invests. And then, uh, while we, then, I will yield to our police, Mr. Chair.
Can we have the, uh, answer to the question of, uh, this morning, uh, twenty-eight hours? And then best of all, we find, uh, we, okay, while waiting for the answer, we'll move to the next slide. Um, honorable, uh, Pancho.
You know, head of court.
Uh, sir, na-nation niyo before 'yung L G U's. Uh, dapat ang L G U's, uh, ide-directo na 'yung work sa rural health units. Napuhob ba ang rural health units, kasi nang dili sa paranggili, dili.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, dun po sa ating list of registered, uh, providers, consultant providers. A lot of them are, uh, in the rural W U S box.
So ilan po 'yung muna response sa inyo na issue po?
Um, by, firstly, I'd like, Mr. Chair, uh, I do not have the exact, only the new R issue, but in terms of government, which, uh, most of them are issues, one thousand nine hundred twelve, issue wide.
Issue wide. So, is it essential, uh, Professor Chair, I would, two seven hundred fifty, can we make it most common, some five hundred billion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yun pong seven fifty pala sa private po, five hundred it was, uh, okay. But definitely, Mr. Chair, if the, if the statement is, uh, M V A, yun po 'yung hinaharap po natin dun po sa sulang.
Oh, kasi if you have enough money, or let's say, may na-exam, like, 'yung pera, then may natititutuloy. Patient na talaga.
We are, Mr. Chair, kaya po dun sa apat na L G U, na i identify na P O H, dun po namin po nang susubukan. Yung pang tuberculosis na dati, nakatiwalay na arbitration, ipapasok na rin po sa consulta. Pati 'yung H I V, primary care, ipapasok rin po sa consulta.
How you handle the case of patients with H I V, kasi very confidential, dili. So how you handle the case of H I V patients?
Definitely, uh, Mr. Chair, we fully agree, and we will become client with all pertinent regulations for, and especially with the number ten percent.
One of the diseases to register.
Correct, uh, that's correct, Mr. Chair, uh, baka registered po pasyente, hindi po natin确定 na, kung ano kaya na diagnosis. So all Filipinos can and should register without us asking what your priority is, sir. Yung po pinagkaroon namin sa isko, wala kang hindi natin alam kung ano 'yung reassess.
Confidential case to, to patient.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Pwede po kaya 'yung basic, ibigay natin do's mga naka-register na? Let's say, 'yung blood guen po nila, mga E C G nila, X-ray, pwede na nga ibigay 'yung do's mga naka-register. Makabehala po sila.
Mr. Chair, maganda po 'yung, uh, kailangan na pwede natin ibigay ng testing. However, Mr. Chair, and also as a physician myself, and based on evidence, sometimes, actually, most of the time, diagnosis is based on complete history and physical exam. Kung hindi namang po natin kailangan kumunod o, or mag-subject ng X-ray, wishing to straighten shot, hindi po natin dapat ibigay sa ating mga pasyente. Even the act of daily puncture, which is for, uh, for that dynasty, involves infection, is specific to us po natin. So sumatol na, Mr. Chair, we look upon a risk-based assessment, kung na yun kailangan kulang pasyente, at mga kakulang siya, hindi rin ego na, pero, so, saan nating bigyan ng target na lahat, kasi may mga risks niyo po, ang mga labor.
Thank you, Officer Chin.
Thank you, honorable Pancho. Uh, before we begin, we'd like to acknowledge the physical presence of, uh, uh, honorable Christian Gavia of the Second District of Arapang, uh, honorable Steve Chong Yan of the Law District of San Ranay, and honorable, uh, Robo, Robo Ordanes of the Senior District of Parteris, and on Zoom, laptop knowledge, honorable Louis Mariano Hernandez of the Second District of Peduna, and honorable David A. Vargas Alonso of the Second District of Cadian. Uh, honorable Francis Astor is, uh, correct, nice.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you, acceleration of Phil Health. Um, siyempre, gusto ko 'yung Filipino language, para mas perini lang ang ating mga kababayan. So, uh, sinasabi natin kanina, siguro, 'yung una po ng statement kanina, nakapatang pasyente, nagkaroon ng uboh sipon, dediretso down sa emergency. Uh, I think that's not good. Alam mo ngayon, ang mga kababayan natin, simple ubo, sipon, pilipista lang nga, dag na, dahil alam nila na papumunta sila't ospital ay talagang bibo ang gagasin. Kaya ka, kung simple ubo, sipon, ay talagang, hindi naman po in-emergency. In-emergency lang, siguro, pag malapit na, mga time, di ba? So, hindi yun purpose tong, uh, primary healthcare, okay? Um, simplhan lang natin itong primary healthcare, uh, o 'yung sinasabi natin, consulta. Kasi ang aim natin ay maging accessible, maging free, integrated, quality healthcare sa ating lahat ng mga kababayan. So more than a hundred million ang ating mga kababayan, tama no? Ang register lang natin ay sixteen point eight million. So, kahit na sa sektor namin, sa education, uh, more than a million kami, no? Uh, nine hundred thousand, to be, ano, to be, um, uh, more or less nine hundred thousand. So dito, alam mo, 'yung teacher, hindi pa siya na akay disturb dito. At alam ng Phil Health yan, taon-taon ang mga teacher, kailangan niya namang medical at mahalagay primary healthcare para sa ating mga teachers, eh, yun na government employees, di ba? So sixteen point eight million, so meron ba kayong target para ma-attend natin, 'yung hundred million na population natin, para ma-involve dito sa Phil Health? Kasi, gusto natin lahat ng ating mga kababayan ma-involve dito eh. Ayaw natin na nagcure tayo, gusto natin ma-prevent ang, ano mang, ano no, um, sakit ng ating mga kababayan. Pero, meron ba kayong target, Mr. Chair, kung paano mareregister itong more than hundred million Philippines?
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Chair, at, uh, bukod, uh, bukod po kaming natutoa sa pagpasok dito. Patsensya po, hindi nila pa po matagal na kamaya, pero, tibid ko po, kaming sarila sa ating gila, para mas magpindamo na at mga kababayan. Um, sa ton ng edukasyon, actually, Mr. Chair, kami ko po, Maria. So after this hearing, Maria, hapon po, ang Department of Education, ang Kakabayan ng Edukasyon, amin kong tutugan 'yung assisted registration ng mga debted teachers. Kausan po si Yusek Gloria, dun ang Miracaro, Obiang, Secretary, Vice President, Duterte, at alam ko po yan, Mr. Chair, kasi meron po ba na, si mga karta for public teachers na require, rask po yun. Alam na, alam ko po, dahil tawag po ng aunt, that this is an issue, at panahon na po, nakapakasol 'yung mga teachers, at nag-aantay na sila. We are meeting with the school district officers, S D O, sa kama ko, Mr. Chair. Uh, sila po ang kaming namin, one night nationwide, Maria, hapon, kasi yun pong nine hundred thousand plus na debted teachers, which also includes non-Asian personnel, basa po, debted. Ay amin kong i-assisted registration. Mayroon po rin ang gulo, Mr. Chair, sa talong honorable po kami na 'yung mga issue sa registration. Kaya namin hindi tutukan, Mr. Chair, kasi solution namin bulto-bulto ang registration. So, in this case, the community deatet teachers ay na-assist namin. We anticipate and we may expect ay ibang mga departments, may nakakilala po eh, tatana. Matulog naman, the Vice President Vigo in NCR has been working with the Department of State and then EAA, Philippine National Police. But for the concern po ng ating representative na sa edukasyon po, kausan po namin na deatet. At yun po talagang po namin, 'yung mga teachers.
Ay, sama rin na rin ang private school teachers, how or less 100,000 din naman 'yan? And then, tanong ko, Maria, ang tanong po, meron ba kayong target, timeframe na meregister 'yung ating mga kababayan? So, time teacher ako, siyempre primary concern po 'yung mga educators. Pero tayo, siyempre nag-usapan natin package na accessible sa ating mga kababayan, lalo-lalo na 'yung mga mahindiga. So, only target po niyo para meregister sa ganun na? Kasi 16.8 million eh, so meron ba kayong target?
Pero po, Mr. Chair, yun po 'yung 16.8 is already nakadista. Actually, ang target na po namin is 'yung FPE, 'yung First Patient Encounter, para pumabayaran na po namin. Kasi nga rin, e-repair nakuha na makaran ng FPE eh. So, pag nagkaroon ng FPE and we want to do it within this third quarter, not even the fourth quarter, we're doing it. Kaya nga po, yun, nagkaming na po namin, Maria, para mangyari na pong FPE na po, para makayaran na po.
Okay, siguro, Mr. Chair, tingnan natin sila na target, ano, paano paano 'yung mareregister. May di pa ako satisfied doon sa sinasabi niyo na, ano no, ng mga registration. We need to, ano no, we need to help complete scheduling ng lahat na sektor ng ating meregister natin. Po talagang gusto natin ng free, accessible, integrated, at kalidad na healthcare sa ating mga kababayan. Kasi kung may, meron tayong free tertiary education for all, dapat may free healthcare services tayo for all. Diba? Hindi naman 'yung FPG eh, diba? Okay, so, so if you want, Mr. Chair, ano, 'yung dista, 'yung timeframe. Pangalawa pa, sinasabi nga kanina na sa pangmaramihan, DOH, kapag individual ay doon sa field health, parang hindi ko to ma-entendihan. So, paano to mag-o-operationalize? So, ano 'yung sabihin niyo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yung tanong ko, kung tulad sa konsulat, ah, individual based services, 'yung pang-isang tao at 'yung population based services, 'yung pangmaramihan. Ang hiningpapapusad ay, dito po konsulta, isa po siyang individual based service, 'yung mga laboratory. Kasi isa na po ako, hindi nakuha na, so manino po 'yun. Mr. Chair, yun po 'yung pangmaramihan, kung yar po, magkaroon tayo ng kampanya, laman sa Bengke, 'yung dating por test, na ngayon, balita ko, parites na, 'yung mga kanya na simbuhuruhin na seek at search and destroy 'yung ating mga pinagtakomahan ng basura, et cetera. Makikita natin si Yusek Gaitaya, na spokesperson na magsasalita, yun po ay na-promotion, Mr. Chair, siya po 'yung pangalan niya.
Okay, naintindihan ko na po. So, halimbawa, sa private, sa public hospital, 'yung ano, center, kasi marami mga teachers na daanan sa Philippine Health Center. So, ako, si teacher, pag nag-register ako, halimbawa, sa Philippine Health Center, na-register na ako. And then, second, makakapag-access na ako doon sa primary healthcare, doon sa hospital na yun. So, tama po ba ganun 'yung sinasabi natin dito sa konsulta?
Mr. Chair, sa ating gugustuhin po, sana po hindi sa ospital mangyayari ang primary healthcare natin. Dapat po sa mga klinika, kasi bigay niyo po, just naku namin 'yung ospital. Pagka-kanin, naintindihan po namin na ang mga ospital, meron rin silang outpatient department, na hindi natin sila nakuha, dala po participate. Pero nila, naintindihan ko, 'yung health system ko, sa isang magandang sistema ng pangkalusugan, hindi lang po dapat umungkong sa loob ng ospital ng ating mga teacher, ating mga pasyente. Dapat sa klinika na napakalapit sa kanilang bahay, dun po sila dapat umupunta.
Pero 'yung 249 na private hospital, ito, diba? Tama po ba yun? Sinasabi mo na 'yung 249 out of 2,000, 161?
At, Mr. Chair, ano po?
Ang clinic, mga mahindiga, bata po ng mga programers?
Alin po, Mr. Chair, pero kuwanin po 'yung mga ospital, mas marami po ang mga klinika.
Okay, so, lag-angyap po mo, Mr. Chair, dun sa sinasabi ng ating mga colleagues kanina about napakapili itong 500 at saka 750 na allocation. Hindi kayo nagiging realistic dun eh, eh, x-ray palang, hindi nakakayain 'yung 500 na yun. What more, iba pang mga laboratory test, plus 'yung mga medicine na kailangan. So, paano mo ba na-determine 'yung 500 saka 750?
So, Mr. Chair, ano po 'yung diyaan po kami na, sana po ay hindi natin nataduhin 'yung 500 sa 13 na test, kasi bulit po siya eh. Pero, ma-reepo ko nga eh, Mr. Chair, na mapapa po siya. Actually, meron po kaming tinapawakan na study, mula po sa mga technical assistance partners sa USA Product Health, na sinasabi nila, on average, na costing sila, kung talagang mamalapati natin, mapapa pa nga 'yung sinabi ng ating mga honorable members kanina, 1,000. Alam ko, Mr. Chair, po, 'yung amount, 3,500 per head. But the question, Mr. Chair, ang tanong natin is, saan po namin pupunin 'yung mga bagay sa 3,500? So, yun po, yun po amount, pag detering po 500, 750. Yan po 'yung katumayong sila sa aming actuarial study. Sa tabi ko na actuarial natin, na ito 'yung papuy ng pera ng kailangan, hanggang di po na panghaling ating kayang bayaran. Yun po 'yung nanitangyan ko bakit na papok sa 500 saka 70. Pero, Mr. Chair, alam ko namin, kuna na kula mo talaga 'yan?
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, ano natin, hindi niyo makalas na mga tanong-kamay ng mga registration. So, gusto natin ano, dun sa ating mga kababayan na meregister na natin. So, 16.8 million, pagka ngayon, ay hindi pa talaga yun, yun talagang, ah, ah, ano ba to? Parang 10% ba, or 1% ang ating population, kaya kailangan talaga natin itong paramingin. And, of course, dun sa mga maliliit na klinika, alam mo nga, dun sa mga RHC, sa public, dapat wala naman itong supporta, wala naman itong mga facilities, so na, paano natin malalambanan 'yung mga primary healthcare? Alam mo ngayon, ang ayumutak sa NGU, ang merilang po, kulang ng mga facilities, kulang ng mga laboratory, et cetera. So, ang free health ba kasama yun dun sa budget nino, na ipoproyed dun sa mga oral health units po nun?
Mr. Chair, ano po 'yung dalilan po bakit sa ating po mga preparation? Meron rin po tayong mga kumukuwanets, saka po, meron po, isang doktor, sa bawang nila, kung hibo, ating ino sa lugar, meron po tayong dapat laboratoryo, at pero tayong dapat botika. Kung hindi available sa loob ng pasilitat, 'yung laboratoryo at 'yung botika, pwede tayong kumuntrata. Muli, kinin po, nasama sa kunkuyin 'yung field health, 'yung kainusin 'yung laboratoryo, 'yung kainusin 'yung botika. Yan po, Mr. Chair, 'yung tinatawag namin na supplies ay nakasama po namin ang DOH at ang Local Government Unit, na siya po natapatayot ng mga RHC. Pero meron pong mga RHC po naman, na kumakasay, yun po 'yung aasat kabila dun sa halos dalawang tipo, na ilanounce na rin po ng ating president, na accreditate A P S po.
So, yun po, Mr. Chair, no, mahadad po no, 'yung accessibility nung primary healthcare. Kasi hindi ako, hindi pupunta ang ating kababayan sa halma na yun, no, at that free. 'Yung out-of-pocket na 50% na pinabayaran ay dapat hindi 'yung nangyayari. Integrated at kalidad na, na health talaga, 'yung dapat natin maibigay. Kaya, Mr. Chair, as manifestation, kaya di ako, hindi kami naniniwala no, na health, na field health ang sagot dyan. Ang sagot dyan ay nationalization, pareng ng mga healthcare services namin, mga hospital. Paramingin 'yung mga health of hospitals, blood cure niya naman ng sapat na punto para po ang ating mga kababayan ay maka-access dun sa ating, ano no, free healthcare services. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Francisco. Follow-up question from Honorable Pancho, and then Honorable Rosa, next.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, just a manifestation lang po, just give you an idea kung magkano po ang inaabon ng isang teacher para po sa kanya medikal checkup. Uh, 1,200 po, uh, blood cure, uh, x-ray, and then the chest. After that, na-extractin' that, nila, mapigil kami ng, kasi ina-berkisa, I didn't do that for two years. May three-day digital checkup kami sa EBS2 sa Bulakan. So, after na-extract, may breakfast kami ng McDonald's. Kasi buto man eh, buto po sila eh. So, 1,200, that's the sandwich and the water, that is 1,400. So, just give you an idea, sir, kung magkano po. So, 'yung 3,000 per head is manakayata? 35, like you mentioned before, 35, 3,000, I don't know, 3,000 or 35? Then it's only 1,400.
Mr. Chair, yun po 'yung 3,500, kesama po lahat ng mga primary care services, hindi lang po yun checkup. So, pati 'yung kung yar, may tuberculosis, kailangan niya ng a-studium exam or an x-ray. Pati 'yung ating mga modernized child care services, anti-natal care, kasama yun po.
Kasi, ang reprimenter po sa teacher, ina-education staff, yun lang.
Opo.
Yun lang po, kaya hinabot na sila ng 1,400, including the refreshment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, actually, pagka-mandar po 'yung accommodation, as soon nga ba andar na babayaan po ang time?
Palisipin ako.
Ah, di sabi po, kasi 'yung 35 miles, ano po po, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, but I'm Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pancho. Now, Honorable Rosa, now, there's no other name?
Thank you very much, Sir Chair. Maray salamat din po, and I'll me first, Sir Chair, to commend Dr. Albert Domingo for a very comprehensive presentation a while ago. Una muna, Mr. Chair, tanong ko po, uh, kanina nag-present po si Dr. Domingo about dun sa data on the out-of-pocket expenses. Pero napansin ko po, 2018 pa po yun, and ipinakita po nila that 49% plus, yun po 'yung out-of-pocket expenses. I'm just wondering kung may updated data na po ang, ang field health? Considering that it's already 2023 now, and in-implement na po natin 'yung UHC. So, I'm just wondering whether the out-of-pocket expenses has already gone down?
Yes.
Uh, Doctor Domingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, at maraming salamat po, kalyon Honorable Salo. Atama po ang ating representative, na medyo duma ako 'yung tawon na hingaw namin. Actually, uh, meron pong dalilan po bakit, uh, kadi rin po sa akademya, bigay niyo, usually sa 2019. Yun po kasi 'yung out-of-pocket expenses on 2020 saka 2021. Opo, umabak po siya, actually, nakatingin po ako sa slide, wala lang po sa screen, no? Um, ng 2020, umabak to 45, ng 2021, umabak to 41. Pero kaya, hindi po namin ginagamit dun, kasi ito 'yung mga tawon ng pandemya, nagpabahak ng pera ang gobyerno, artificial po eh. So, alam po ng ating mga health economists, hindi namin dinapansin po yun, kasi hindi po yun 'yung normal na circumstances. Yun po 2019, pag umuutok 'yung pandemya, nasa 49 per head po. So, inabangan pa natin 'yung Philippine National Health Accounts, or BMHA, as of 2022, na medyo kalahati, pandemya paleng kalahati normal. 'Yung full cycle ng 2020, yun 'yung medyo maniraman natin na, bakay dinadalaga 'yung situation natin ngayon, Mr. Chair.
Maray salamat po, Mr. Chair. So, basically, ngayong taon ba, Dr. Albert, ang in-expect po natin na maging benchmark po natin when it comes to universal healthcare impact dun sa out-of-pocket expenses?
Uh, Mr. Chair, basiran po sa top po, nung datos, uh, siguro po, dahil kung yar, yun pong 2014, 52% po 'yung out-of-pocket. Pero nung 2016, hanggang 2018, 50% po, 2 percentage points lang po 'yung binaba, sa top po ng 1, 2, 3, o 4, na top po. So, mahirap po kasi mag-set, dahil hindi naman po yun tanong, Mr. Chair, na ano po pwede nating gawing target or benchmarking sa out-of-pocket. Pero kasi hindi lang po can help 'yung, may role para mapupunta 'yung out-of-pocket. Kalaki po 'yung kulang natin, pero kasama din po 'yung mga, kaya, 'yung mga supplies, mga kubotis ng DOH, nakakatulungin po 'yung umabak. But to directly answer the question of Mr. Chair, we, you know, we are just looking at a very small one, malaki 5% eh, 1 to 2, 1 to 3 percentage point decrease in the next year po. Yun po 'yung ating titignan po, Mr. Chair.
Maray salamat po, Mr. Chair. Ang next question ko po, marami po sa mga nakakausap po, Mr. Chair, uh, na nagpapakonsulta, nagpapa-checkup, and kadalasan po, pupunta po sila sa private, uh, clinics, and kadalasan din, hindi po accredited 'yung mga clinics na pinupuntahan po nila. At the end of the day, dito po sa binabanggit po natin na konsulta package, which is very good project po at program po ng gobyerno, hindi po namamaterialize, so hindi po nagkacron po ng impact dun sa mga pasyente. Kasi hindi naman po pala accredited 'yung mga field health. Ngayon, natatanong po sila, bakit? Ang isa sa mga rason, Mr. Chair, is kadalasan, ayaw po nilang mag-go through the process because of dun sa delayed payments ng field health. So, we're just wondering whether this particular matter, 'yung delayed payments, ay na-address na po? On how much exactly 'yung improvement? Alam ko, nabanggit na rin po ito ni Professor Stella kanina, Congresswoman Stella. So, it's just a follow-up, kumusahoo kaya ngayon? Kasi, I understand, this is one of the reasons bakit hindi nagpapa-accredit 'yung mga certain private institutions. Kaya at the end of the day, 'yung mga kababayan din po natin, they're not able to benefit from the, uh, konsulta package of the field health.
Yes, Mr. Chair, maraming salamat po sa tanong, ipakaso, malamang po sa aming Chief Operating Officer para sa tugon po.
Attorney, Attorney Edisano. Mr. Chair, person, Honorable member, uh, Salo, Mr. Chair, person, today. We have been paying our providers on time. In fact, we have our turnaround time of national average, it's 27 days. We understand, Mr. Chair, person, that despite this, we see a counter challenges. And these challenges are brought about by lack of personnel, system problem, and sometimes, a policy issue. But we are addressing these interest, Mr. Chair, and we will get to paying our providers on time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Maray salamat po, Mr. Chair. So, we really hope na mas mapapabilis na po 'yung proseso ng reimbursement ng field health. Third item, Mr. Chair, of course, ang aim po natin dito is really to lower down the cost, particularly out-of-pocket expenses. Uh, napakaganda po nung programa na konsulta package, pero ang tanong po dito, Mr. Chair, after po nilang magkonsulta at may kailangan pong bilhin na gamot po 'yung mga pasyente po natin, meron po bang support ay binibigay po 'yung field health din? Kasi at the end of the day, nagpa-konsulta nga, nalaman nga niya 'yung sakit po niya, pero the end of the day, wala naman po siyang pambili ng gamot. So, how do we address this particular concern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, at maraming salamat po sa tanong. Tunay nga po, naayon sa Philippine National Health Accounts, 2,090 data, manigil talawang 1% ng gas busid na pupunta sa gamot. So, nakakaalam yun, talaga 'yung gamot kumakain, sascombayad. At ang uwi po natin dyan ay kasama na sa mismong konsulta package ang 21, 21 na mga gamot, Mr. Chair, na dapat hindi ibilhin sa labas. Kapag sinabi ng isang konsulta provider na ikaw ay kailangan ng para setaon, ikaw ay kailangan ng losatan, halimbawa lang po, yun po ay kasama na dapat dun sa ibiligay ng konsulta provider. Hindi siya dapat bumibili sa labas, basta kasama dun sa 21 na gamot, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Chair, clarification lang po, so dun sa ibabayad na si 150 pesos, kasama na din po dun 'yung gamot na bibigay dun sa nagkonsulta sa kanya?
Opo, Mr. Chair, at ang mga malapatin po yun, na huli po natin, huwag po natin dapat gagawin sa 750, 21 na gamot, kasi nagpupuying po tayo. So, parang sama-sama po, hindi naman po lahat ng tao ay gagamit 'yung gamot na kaidaming bigay, ano yun, Mr. Chair?
Finally, Mr. Chair, ang, hindi ko naintindihan kung bakit kailangan po ng sariling, uh, datos po 'yung field health when it comes dun sa binabanggit po natin na registration, when in fact, we already have the national ID now. So, kung kakailangan rin po natin 'yung universal na coverage immediately, hindi, bakit kailangan pa na magparistro ang individually? Hindi ba natin pwedeng commitin', Mr. Chair, 'yung national ID as basis for registration of each and every Filipino in the field health?
Salamat po, Mr. Chair, uh, sa aking gugustuhin is sa tanong, ang tanong po ni Honorable Salo ay registration into field health. Uh, in principle po, Mr. Chair, and, uh, I think my Chief Operating Officer, ganun, even, sir, na, parang, hindi po 'yung nakakaba namin talaga. Nakuhusap namin ang ESA, dapat isa-hiwalay nila lang eh. Pero, mga tanong po, Mr. Chair, is yun sa registration, mga konsulta, konsulta. Mr. Chair, meron po kasi tayong tinatawag, uh, na turbin and patent then? So, primary healthcare po, primary healthcare, pag sinabi ngayon, patent then? O ano sa, makilala kita ako ang doktor, makilala po 'yung mga pasyente, ahalaga, nagbubita na pupunta or? Magalaga po sa, makilala po muna namin 'yung pasyente, kaya kailangan po niya mag-register sa primary healthcare. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, maray salamat, Mr. Chair. So, huling clarification na po, so ibig sabihin po ba 'yung pag-access po natin ng benefits ng field health? For example, napunta po sila ospital, kailangan pong bayaran, covered ng field health. So, hindi na po kakailangan yan nung binabanggit po ninyo na registration, Dr. Albert? Ang kung hindi, at the fact that he's a Filipino and pursuing to the universal healthcare by virtue of being a Filipino, we're entitled to the benefits and the coverage of field health. So, paano po natin in-address po yun?
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Chair, Honorable Salo, ang akaladito sa mga, sa ating kung sinusunod, EE and LGD. Bawang Pilipino na bumuna sa isang hospital, kasi siya po ay Filipino, ay siyang makayaran ng field health. Hindi po siya katandihan, yun po lahat niya sa registration, Mr. Chair, para po sa konsulta sa primary healthcare po.
Maray salamat, Mr. Chair, maray salamat, Dr. Albert.
Thank you, Honorable Salo. Uh, Honorable Marco.
Thank you very much, sir. I think, sorry, talaga namin dito, yun batas. Dapat isimpliya natin, sorry, Honorable Marco. Uh, it's Honorable Wallace. Okay. Sorry. Sorry, I will, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, goal is always for the whole best. If you want to go more, then you can go first. Giving a side, sir, thank you very. Um, well. Note be note, we are slow in the implementation, uh, in the universal healthcare. Uh, your numbers would speak for itself, you don't have to conclude. But when we see the numbers, um, we are very slow in the implementation. But of course, we would not want to blame the implementation, uh, in field of a lot because it's multi-sectoral approach. But in the konsulta package, your numbers also speak for itself. You have a budget of 8 billion, and you said that only 100 billion has been released or paid out. You said that you have four sandboxes, and you also have 16.8 billion registrants for the konsulta package. The first question is this. With 100 billion, are those payoffs part of the subset of the sandboxes or in the total registration that you have?
Mr. Chair, the 174 million is nationwide, so, uh, it's not in the sandboxes, includes everyone.
Okay, so it means to show, or before I conclude, what percentage goes to the sandbox and what percentage goes outside the sandbox?
Mr. Chair, the sandbox that have yet to start, actually, they just signed last June. So, it is safe to assume, uh, that this is not yet for the sandbox for, this is pre-sandbox here, as well as, Mr. Chair. That's why the numbers speak for itself, it's really, you guys are reading so differently, and I think you have to increase sandboxes or you have, you need, okay.
The problem that we see right now is on the demand of the supply side. When I say, uh, demand, it is the registrants, the patients, and the supply side, and damian. The supply side includes doctors, health facilities, et cetera. We don't have a problem with the resources that bridge the two, which is the resources of field health. The question for the demand side is this. We have achieved a 70, 17,000 registration, and, uh, the Congresswoman, uh, Francisco mentioned that dapat ispidabyan. And you mentioned that baka naman po may problema sa registration. I think, mag-o-gustan, let's not say makan, let's just focus on saying, there's a problem with the registration. Now, uh, when, when we focus on the problem with registration, the question here now lies. If we speed up the registration, there might be a problem with the supply side. Because the supply side will not be ready, even if the resources will be ready. If we slow down the registration, then we might have a problem with the, uh, the supply side. Because there are a lot of, uh, people entering the supply side without the demand side. Next question is this, uh, Mr. Chair. In the primary healthcare facilities, we mentioned that we are putting up sandboxes. Can we open up more sandboxes, more than four areas, to include the private sector? And we have to implement this immediately. So as to refrain from saying, baka naman, baka naman, it's already August and baka naman. Can you imagine us hearing you stating, why are doctors being paid in government or in the healthcare facilities 500 and 750? Baka naman, mababak, pero naman natin talaga mapapake. Let's face that idea already. And then, kung kailangan taasan, my question is, what is the standard that you need to increase the amount from 750 to 1? From 500 to 1?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and there are two questions is, number one, why don't we open more sandboxes? And number two, what is the standard that we need to increase the validation rate? Uh, we respect, Mr. Chair, yun po 'yung selita na baka naman, yun po rin ginagamit natin sa mga sandbox, yes, the experimental. Yun po 173 million na bayaran po natin is already given the current non-sandbox approach. We are not sure, and, o personally, I am not, I do not want to raise expectations that a sandbox will automatically mean that the payments will be faster or more wide. I am operationally aware, Mr. Chair, that there are elements such as information technology. As you mentioned, Mr. Chair, the supply side, that if we put this in an untested, yet to be proven policy called the sandbox, we will encounter, Mr. Chair, more mistakes, more errors than what we are already encountering in an ongoing three-year faulty immunity program. Mr. Chair, let me ask Dr. Domingo, before the sandbox, do you have any study regarding the standard of payment or the payment rate in the Philippines per capita, per a konsulta? Yes, Mr. Chair, as ever, and now, Juan Chisa.
3,500, Mr. Chair. So, you said, you just concreted yourself, you don't know the answer, and that is the reason why?
So you said, you just concreted yourself, you don't know the answer, and that is the reason why we did the sandbox. And yeah, you already have a study that says three thousand five hundred. So it means to say, it must be more than seven hundred fifty. So you don't say that you don't know the answer, it must be more than seven fifty.
Well, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, the three thousand five hundred is computational. Iba po 'yung napagbili natin sa country leader sa ngayari, sa natin dinasal ko ng buhay. Kahit kusin po natin sa B Health, natin B Health, ngayon po natin relamang na hindi pwede po bayarin ng COA, then pwede makapagbigit. Wala po sa costing assumptions 'yung COA. So when the three thousand five hundred is computed, it was purely an academic exercise based on the best available assumptions. But the real world is fraught with many challenges, Mr. Chair. Which is why we are carefully perceiving and making sure that we manage this correctly. So that we don't encounter any problems with COA, with other stakeholders, and we perceive by the sandbox.
Rather than COA can be persuaded to relax its policies on this based from the recommendation of Congress. Have you ever had any chats with doctors on how much it will suit the package would be? And most probably, you know, I'm also a clinician or practitioner. You know very much that everybody would say, "I'm not gonna join that because it's too low." So which means to say, the reason why I'm trying to back this issue is, it must be more than seven hundred. It must not be less than seven hundred. So that's why dapat walang pakan, baka naman lumabas. Baka dapat taasan.
Mr. Chair, ah kami po ay sumasangayon sa inyo na dapat talagang taasal. Pero may diroong tanong po dalagi, hindi po 'yung baka naman naibin sa lumero. Yung baka naman is kaya ba ng sistema natin. And Mr. Chair, letting your indulgence sa sabry ni siya also. We know that any new drug introduced has to consider the way that the system, the body responds to the drug. That's why we have clinical trials. Hindi na may mandiscovered lang tayo na period na is automatic, hindi rin natin tutok natin siyang pasyente. Kailangan subukan muna natin sa isang controlled experiment, kaya meron po tayong mga sandbox. Which allows, Mr. Chair, to your second question, what is the standard that we should will increase the premium? If we assume that three thousand five hundred is the ceiling based on standards. By the way, meron po mga team formal interviewers na collection si R T five plus cost in data. We gradually approach that looking at standalone packages. Meron po tayong PD, meron tayong Nishidae, Magerd, and Childcare, Animal Barre, Puyao, Naga Kamere. Yan po ay inaral ng technical team at gradually tinataasan natin 'yung five hundred seven fifty. Ina-add natin 'yung mga package po ngayon. So there is an answer, Mr. Chair. Sumasangayon po kami na talagang mababa. Ngunit malapit po natin saan na huwag nating gumagusto ngayos ngayos 'yung pag-implementasyon. As the doctor, Honorable Congressman, Dr. Wallace understands, medicine cannot be given when you discover, we have the destination.
That's correct, I understand that. Ang point ng rabilis ayaw kasi for fraud, you know, for the spirit of forecasting. We need to know right now, what is the ideal, okay? Hindi natin sinasabi dapat implement that nationwide. But of course, what we want right now for forecasting and for future reference of Congress, kailangan natin 'yung figures as of now. So going to my question, I think we need to increase the sandboxes. So as to increase also our denominator. So that when we use these figures, mga pakataas 'yung interview average, and it can give us a better direction for people.
Our perspective on this figure set, Mr. Chair, is to implement the four sandboxes first for a short period, implementation time of one year. And when we see where our successes are, yes, you will expand the number. And we, can we uh reassure that more sandboxes for private sector included? There are two actually, one is a valid and the other one is a non-existent. And hopefully, Mr. Chair, for their network, private sector can join even the non-sandbox. Better input and private sector practice. Okay, so.
So uh are you saying that with private individuals, private uh clinics or private entities could apply? You will bring them to the sandbox uh category so that uh we can, we can be helpful to private sector and how?
So may useful, Mr. Chair, yun po sandbox, kasi may party si po siya na as already mentioned, there have been selected sites already. And the two partners of private sector. So for now, any private sector who will join is most, they are most welcome to join under the regular program, not the sandbox.
Ah, okay, so at least you're open to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Para sa finish, you adding uh summarization ng lahat ng tinignan mo.
Yes, Mr. Chair, okay, thank you.
Um. My next question is this, um. The doctors accreditation to be included in this, uh can we make a review also? Uh, baka kasi all the demands side, oh, sorry, baka on the supply side, may problema sa accreditation ng oras doctors also. Positively that only forty-six thousand doctors are accredited. And I think the national count for doctors is uh more than that, or more than double of the forty-six thousand.
That is a well-received uh suggestion directive given, Mr. Chair. Because uh most of the doctors who are accredited specialists. We do know that in terms of number, at any unit time, there are more general practitioners uh who are not accredited but out there. A lot of the practicing, some of them not practicing like myself. But having said that, they do have to be accredited, and para tumama't main providers of konsulta, we will agree. Can we will start with that, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, and for the last question, I saw in your slide a while ago that in the, in the scheme of uh all uh field of payments, you have invasions and outpatient. And the invasion, um I think uh something uh like eighty percent uh field of payment, and then invasion zero. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Other way around, uh invasion and outpatient, invasion uh uh as eighty plus percent of field of uh payment. And then the outpatient, I think I saw is zero.
Apologies, Mr. Chair.
In the other slide that you showed.
Figures, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. In the table that you, that you showed us.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but uh I do not recall which slide that is, Mr. Chair.
Um, one slide, what does field of pay for?
Uh, okay.
Table nine.
Right, right. The schematic diagram, Mr. Chair, that shows population base and individual base, this is the one, Mr. Chair?
Um, the comparison of amount of field of payments for invasion versus outpatient, table nine.
Uh, Mr. Chair, okay, uh I think you're referring to a, it is like, but I, I know where you're looking at, it was presented earlier. Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, what is the question, Mr. Chair, on that side?
Uh, it says here, uh ninety-one percent payout uh for two thousand fifteen, um uh to two thousand nineteen, it's more than ninety percent. And then in the outpatient, the primary healthcare is zero. Because, uh is that because the program is just starting now?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. The whole program, uh PCP and the older one, the OPD outpatient benefit package, that's precisely the storyline. In the previous years, they were not paying as much. Now, I understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Wallace. Uh, a follow-up question by Honorable Kimbo, and then Honorable Marco for you.
Hi, um, Mr. Chair, um, I'm the answering the main question over here. Of the four hundred fifty-five key and local assets, four hundred seven are in investments. So about of that maybe are um A S. So, um, babalik po ako dun sa panawagan earlier na sana po ibahay na namin ng uh uh mabis po, dahil talagang kailangan talaga na ating kasi nung anyway po, um, na emphasize naman po ng lahat naman po ng kaasang. Kailangan na kailangan talaga. Uh, anyway po, um, tuot po sa eight day yun, yun po ay natagabi ako, may sarili ako for the eight day yun, naglalanan para sa konsulta.
Mr. Chairperson, Honorable, presentable people. I assume it is your person that you already have uh these uh
Yeah.
Don't have a shot.
Yes, so in other words, na sa ininayera. So, yun po, so the point being, so at the end of the year, um, which I believe history is on providing nagkatalo kayo ng E S funds and nagkatalo kayo ng investable funds at the end of the year. Is because hindi na talaga nagagastos 'yung tinilaan ng kong peso at the year. Kasi tama po ba na meron naman kasi kayo 'yung pinokleta sa mga magagawa, 'yung mga premium collections? So last year po, magkano po ang ating premium collections?
Mr. Chairperson, Honorable people, our total premium contribution for twenty twenty-two was two hundred twenty-eight point six billion. Mr. Chairperson.
Okay, um, magkano po, so ang tapo daan, meron kayo 'yung tinung kulang ko lang, may mga eighty billion from Congress, the land premium subsidies. Magkano po 'yung uh total benefit uh payments?
Mr. Chairperson, Honorable, and the team po, for twenty twenty-two, our benefit gains expenses was one hundred forty-three point five billion.
Oh, sa another ways, so nakit po. So tas sobra po, kasi ang tapo daan, magkano po 'yung investment in kada nyo?
Mr. Chairperson, Honorable, the seven billion, our interest and other income total, eleven point eight billion for twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairperson.
Okay, ulat po?
Eleven point eight billion.
Eleven point eight billion, so premium collected two hundred twenty-eight billion from Congress, you received eighty billion, tama, last year?
Mr. Chairperson, yeah, I'd be allowed to remind myself, for the premium contributions, Mr. Chairperson, we received two hundred sixteen point seven billion for twenty twenty-two. And for interest and other income, we receive eight, eleven point eight billion, Mr. Chairperson, and for total, two hundred eighty-one six billion, I can read.
Okay, but then, the point being, it's far in excess of the hundred forty-three billion um in benefit payout. Tama po?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So, so yun ang taigan po bakit, um, at the end of the year, ang dami pong excess, kaya po ang dami muna 'yung i-invest. Yun po, and pumakay na ang uh short narrative. So talagang, again, um, acceptable po na talagang meron kayo napakalami utang sa mga ospital, at sa ngayon po, under the konsulta package, may mga utang din po sa mga healthcare facilities na naka-arey po sa konsulta package. So moving forward, the point being, molesa, so this can appeal, napakaimportante ng ating konsulta program. You, you mentioned it, we really need to have a successful primary care program, kasi we need to prevent rather than cure. What it hinges on this successful payment, wala nga, wala magregister na provider. Wala provider, wala rin demand sa'yo, magribil tayo ngan. So, nagpiusap po kami ng natin gila, starting out, so yun po. And the last question for you, the Honorable, um hindi po ba kailangan po ba ng panawagan po kayo na magpaattach sa Office of the President? And I know that um the konsulta packages, of course, are a priority of the president, which, of course, I think we would all agree with, it's very, very important. But I heard that there's a call um for you be attached to the Office of the President, hindi po ba, tayanan?
Mr. Chairperson, if I may, Mr. Chairperson, regardless, why my Mr. Chairperson? Regardless of where field of is placed or attached, we will implement the program, Mr. Chairperson.
Pero kamo po ba na may panawagan kayo na magpaattach?
To my mind, Mr. Chairperson, I do not uh have this direction to be attached to the Office of the President.
Ah, so what? Para naman baso po kasi sa jager ngayon?
It is objectives.
Oo, but merong, merong news item na
Yeah. Maybe I love to, uh, to briefly, briefly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairperson, I can remember that uh you recreated a technical working group to study the possibility of field of being placed under the Office of the, directly under the Office of the President. And I believe there was already a, a report on this, which was already submitted in the Office of the President. Though I do not have personal knowledge to the recommendation by the E W D D, which was organized by you, which, whether it be not, etc., Mr. Chair. Honorable, the
Salamat, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Kimbo. So this was before Secretary Honorable, the E W D D. Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Marco is now representing. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I want to simplify everything. Uh, we are making it so complicated, uh the way you presented, uh, Mr. Udingo. Although it's very impressive, uh but uh if you talk to ordinary people, uh they might not understand what you presented. At the end of the day, uh you know, when a patient comes to the center, they should be treated and leave without paying anything. I think that's the very concept. Now, let me ask and probably simplify this. Uh, if you do talk about the own uh konsulta benefits, uh that no process of one is there to register, authorize, and uh use whatever is available. Um, uh, an assumption is all Filipinos will be covered under the universal healthcare law. There are one hundred fourteen million Filipinos. Uh, and you pay a premium for all those one hundred fourteen million if they register. Or only the families. If you talk about the households, there are about twenty-seven million households as against the total population of one hundred fourteen million. If they will be covered under the universal healthcare law, will they pay uh your one hundred fourteen? Or they only pay uh based on the number of household?
Mr. Chair, it's calculations of individuals.
Individual, okay. Now, if I multiply five hundred uh pesos per one hundred fourteen billion Filipinos, and total yun is about fifty-seven billion. Okay, and you don't raise them at one time, right? Now, if I make a roadmap for five years, your first premium that will be paid by this uh population, it will be about eleven billion four hundred billion pesos. As in, they will not register in one hundred fourteen. On the second year, with a twenty percent incremental increase every year, and next year will be twenty-two million billion eight hundred million pesos, and so forth and so on. Until on the fifth year, the amount that will be paid by the government to field is fifty-seven billion eight hundred million pesos. Now, to me, hindi mababa, you know, eh, five hundred seven fifty, don't think it's uh it's low. Because you're talking of volume, just like when you go to an insurance. You know, you only pay the premium based on the actual study of how much should be paid. And to me, paying field, eleven million four hundred thousand, a million, every year will be sufficient. As a matter of fact, I was uh was given to you eight hundred billion, eight eight billion, but you only spend how much? Hundred million lang. So sobra sobra ang binayad sa inyo ng gugiaro, dapat ibalik niyo 'yung dobrang yan, kasi hindi niyo ginanit, diba?
Yes, Mr. Chair, eh, kailangan gamitin siya. Hindi huwag mo lang gamitin, kung hindi mo nagamit, ibalik mo sa gugiaro para magamit natin sa mga port coming na ano natin, mga pasyente o mga uh tao natin sa iba sa nagagamit siya nila. Kaya huwag niyo, ako, hindi ko nanginiwala na kulang 'yung five hundred saka seven fifty. Mr. Chair, precisely, kung gatik po kanina sa mga tanong ni Honorable Wallace, hindi, sinabi ko three thousand five hundred, diba? Sabi't maliit eh. Sa tanong po ni Honorable Wallace, 'yung study po, kaya sinabi ko 'yung T five. Mili, kaya kung ako inuulit, ayaw po namin na padalos tayo sa taasan kaya yan.
Kasi dapat meron tayong actual study.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
What is your track record in terms of uh cost during the last five years, two years, one year? Eh, 'yung last year na eh, hundred million lang. So kailangan nating tingnan na ganon. And that's how you do it, diba? Ang assumption dito, basta Pilipino, kahit na hindi magregister, dapat uh accepted dyan sa mga centers. Whether registered or not, kasi Pilipino yan eh. Pag pumunta siya sa center, don't never register when di pa nakaristro, but we should not reject them.
Yes, Mr. Chair, for sure, definitely.
Okay, the main challenge that you have right now, I believe, is 'yung kailangan, 'yung accreditation ng mga doctor, uh both public and private, 'yung mga kailangan na iskwetan natin. So that anybody who will go, there will be created, no? Uh, let's say there are twenty-one medicine, how many?
Thirty.
Thirty. O 'yan, hindi naman lagsal, sabi mo nga kanina, that all will be given to the people. So pwedeng darawal ang tatlo, so itulog ka, the cost of that. Let's say C V C na, twenty pesos lang yan eh. O mag the other test, uh, yuik acid, magkaasa naman yan, one hundred pesos lang yan. So there will be something So, there will be some patients who will only spend mga 200 pesos. Give you mga subor 700, but at the end of the day, ang average is, let's say, 500 pesos. But because you don't register one uh one time, is target natin 'yan, and we have to tell all these uh service providers, regardless of whether they are registered, authorized, as long as they go there and they ask for treatment, they should be given the treatment. Hindi 'yung, wala, hindi na nakaristro dito, napagandahan approach at natin, pero kung siya pasyente, pumunta sa health center, and I'm not treated, or I'm not tested for all of this test, as enumerated, 13 of them, what do I feel? Walang kwenta 'yung universal access. Uh, I mean, universal healthcare law na pinasa natin dito. Gusto natin, lahat ng Pilipino, uh 'yun ang ano eh, 'yun ang ano, 'yung, 'yung aggressive lang 'yung pangregister. Yes, you should not be aggressive for them to be treated, exactly. So, 'yun ang, siguro 'yun ang dapat nating doin', you need to draw, but you, you consider, will all Filipinos should be not considered as registered. And if they don't physically come, and they come and they are sick, okay, kaya, pagpatscheka. Right there and there, they should be registered and authorized and treated. Wala na nating ibaybang, I mean, 'yung registration, 'yung uh authorization, one stop shop, one stop shop, dapat. Kasi kung hindi, maguvisit ng pasyente, masakit ang kuhin niya, tapos eh, palipat niya pagpasyalan ang pupunta, to have them registered, authorized, and treated. Pwede mo nating gawin 'yun?
Pwede, pwede po, Mr. Chair, in that, ang gudusin Secretary Rambosa, the first actual agenda, bawat Pilipino ramdam ang nalisugan. Meron po kasi.
Oo, pero sa process ni Disingo, mga.
Yeah, sir.
Ang galing na nila, simplify it.
Mr. Chair, eto po ay back end, hindi po ito dapat uh pinapahirapan ng ating mama mayan, hindi po yata sila dapat pinapabalik-balik, dapat po talaga parang naman tinasugan, biha, Mr. Chair.
Oo nga, kasi alam mo, sa mga igal ospital dyan, di ba, pagpasok na pasyente, masakit ang tiyan, ang daming tinatanong. Tinatanong na rito, pagpunta sa kabilang bisita, tinatanong ba, napakadami. So, I think one stop shop, binigay ang mga ala, ang taon, kasi dapat, 'yun na 'yun, kasi Pilipino 'yan eh.
Sang ayaw.
'Yun ang, 'yun ang poseso natin, and that's the concept of this universal healthcare law, that we are part of Congress.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
'Yun ang kailangan natin, and you're trying to argue, you try to hold uh, hold municipalities and cities na nandito sa akin. Pero importante, you certify already, you qualify, 'yung mga providers, uh that will give all this treatment and services to our uh Pilipino, uh here in uh this country, kailangan natin 'yan, kung natin patagalin, make it easy, one man na lang, mga document lang, eto 60 pages of presentation mo medyo, very impressive, kung nasa, nasa aplikaderya, eh, sa akademya, pero 'yung mga tao, umisan, hindi naman nila binabase. Even the doctors, they will not, ano? Certify natin, mabilis lang, and paluwanan natin dito, that the 500 was, it's not small, also the 750, kasi 1,000 'yung ano na 'yan, assured the violence, diba?
Opo, Mr. Chair, makakasa po kayo na, 'yung po kami tinakita ngayon, ay kami pong hinagalan ang wisdom of Congress, kaya pinagretoon namin technical details, pero hindi naman po 'yan ang tinakita sa ating mga member ko. Simple lang po, bawat Pilipino ramdam ang nalisugan.
Yeah, so, i-ano natin 'yan, sa praktika natin, 'yung mga, 'yung mga pinunggit ko kanina, sinres dapat, 'yung tao. Umuwata doon, nagpatscheka po, kaya, nagpapakes ng kanyang dugo, mabilis lang. Anong turnaround natin para masiguro natin na magagawa ito? Kailangan meron tayo, not more than 4 to 3 hours when we goes to the clinic, or to any private uh center?
Opo, 'yung turnaround, thanks, Mr. Chair. Actually, 'yung kung nangyari na po 'yan, uh let me be careful in saying this, that will be a happy problem to have, kasi sa ngayon ako, hindi siya nagkakamit as said, there will not be a problem ahead. So, when we get there, we will optimize, and we will make sure that the turnaround time is not high.
And 'yung registration, kung hindi na sila pumunta doon, let's say, we talk to the city, tapos, tapong ang barong guys, uh then uh, kailangan, we digitize all of this, kasi dami talaga. Expression na ginagawa, dami talaga, potential loyalty, nandyan pa 'yung PSD, and all this. If we can just put all this thing together, hayan ang merong start kada.
Mr. Chair, mo sila na mapuang sa bahay na, kasi nakaladiko sa universal healthcare app, every Filipino shall get a certified primary care provider of choice. Uh, ang galing natin doon, anyway, they want to want choice, eh, wala siya, sa, sa lugar, sa lugar. Nahirap ko, Mr. Chair, kasi ang sabi po ng abogado sa akin, you have to ascertain the choice as directed, I know.
Yeah, but uh, you know, there are some areas in this country with only one or two doctors. In more than 120 municipalities, they have not seen a doctor.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we call this assisted registration, if the mayor or the chief executive of the area is willing to certify that he or she has asserted the choice of the individual, then that will not question, and we will process.
Okay, so we, 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 we would uh see now that we will execute this uh the basket, uh possible, you know, time that we can, so that people can avail of this.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think uh, I'm okay already, and uh, there's a guarantee from Doctor Disingo, yeah. Of course, I expect that the chief uh executive officer of Pila. But uh, 'yung po ano, 'yung Pila, 'yung po mga do, mga hospital namin sa bahay, hindi man 27 days of turnaround. Matagal po, may mga, isang tao na 'yun, di ba, sa SLU Hospital, sa VCHs, pwede po bang tingnan natin po 'yun uh, so uh, uh, our chief executive officer, po lang, you know?
Mr. President, honorable, yes, sir. We go to the bug, sir, and we're ready to the office of Pila, and have a meeting with all the healthcare providers, and the people, sir.
Okay, salamat po, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, honorable, my God, before you receive, that inform is that the uh, the second agenda, the integration that we start this thing, that E healthcare system will be scaled up next week. So we'll only talk of the uh, that we might be seeing during.
Okay, so, Mr. President, siguro before we start, may I suggest that we create a very technical working group to uh review the, the several bills on E uh registration, and uh come up with a substantial bill already before we uh start the next meeting, so that we substitute the legislation, such a bit.
Yes, uh, honorable, my God. Uh, honorable, yes, it's not right on me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to uh, um, you have of this uh on me representative, oh, with regards to the speed under reimbursement, especially on private healthcare institutions. But at the morning, I mean, I think that, I think I was 60 days at night.
The answer, Mr. President, honorable, that yes, you have a 60 degree with the reach to progress, and we, we is our partner provider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I have it in my personal knowledge that in Bahamas, some reach 90 to 180 days, so I believe that aside from Baguio, I think my task would be one of the places that we would uh, other than this matter. Aside from, yes, and then I know that, since we were also working with the consulta package, with some of the L G use, and uh accredited private care provider networks there. Um, Dr. Albert, I think you had, you said you're having the IT system in this to ensure that the integrity of those that are registered, both of the patients and the, even accredited private institutions, tama?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have, but if you mean, sir, that we are ensuring that the system is uh working, yes, but the head is here actually, uh.
Okay, good, maybe it's something that we could uh work on, because before I came in here, and knowing that we will be discussing the consulta package, I decided to ask on how it's coming along in, in these various phases. What has come out was, there is a lack of interest to keep on going with it, given that the data integrity is showing that at least 50, at most 50% of the consulta transactions does not go through, but this is already provided as a service by either the uh, our HU, or a private, uh an accredited private institution. So, if we're going to look at this, even from the operational perspective, we cannot, we cannot promote the consulta if our operational back, back end could not, could not be uh, well, would not, did not, that, that, that of integrity already. So, highly discouraged talaga, not only the um, the patients, but also the private institutions which could be upgraded. So I do hope that this is something that we could uh, that we could address. And uh, if you wish to look at it in more detail, our office is ready, so that we will discuss it with them.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, uh, I wish to assure the committee that, that I think other means here is a staff adjustment, statement of a council of adjustment. The reminders would understand, I'm actually part of the messenger group, where all your support requests come up, and we are working on this decision, and we'd like to work with you.
Uh, I'm curious, do they, do they know what kind of data system they use?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I defer our chief information officer for these details.
Miss uh, Paulita, uh, Bona. Yes, uh, definitely, Chair, and honorable members. Now, in terms of the databases, you mind, when it is associated with, they can have their own ID system. So, we define them, the data definition and standards that they have to approve of, uh at the center of his head office.
But you do not have any standard, like, are you used to SBL or or?
Uh, it doesn't matter, po, because we can have the most, the most, the water item, facilities. Some are using Microsoft SPL, some are using my SPL. So the point there is, if you have high resistance, po, you can actually uh apply for certification of the electronic medical record for uploading of the data for.
Okay, that answers a lot of my questions also, David, but in the, by, by every data dictionary, in different pages, maybe that's the reason why some of these transactions are not going through.
Uh, there are data definition standards for we to gain that this uh, probably to explain comply po ng ating mga health service provider, health provider, and even internal developer po ng ating mga facilities. So we work for by the standard definition.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one last question, because uh, we were, we were working on the financials, right, since we discussed it on Congress table. Even uh, Dr. Albert, you mentioned that for uh, complete consulta package, let's see, will work with your 3,500 pesos? You registered close to 17 million patients, is that correct?
Or this year, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay. Just doing a quick calculation, if we're going to be providing this to the 17 million um registered patients, you will need those 260 billion pesos.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Last year, you had a surplus of 140,000 billion pesos. And then, it's coming out also that after the um, records from uh, Congressman Kingbo, that you have about 407 billion in assets, also that is liquid invested in financial instruments. Your interest from this is around 11 billion, which gives about a 2.7% return. You also have annually requested from Congress 80 billion pesos. I cannot see why we cannot increase the consulta package to the 3,500, so that we could provide a comprehensive medical services and the medicines that the patient is, if I'm not mistaken, in our policy for one whole year. So, you have 147 billion in surplus, which includes already the 11 billion um normally from interests from your invested instruments, and then you already have 80 billion requested from Congress annually. So why can't we, why can't we have our uh, consulta package increased? So that we could also have more private medical institutions during this consulta.
Mr. Chair, uh before I move to our chief operating officer for the better explanation, from a health financing perspective, uh these amounts that you mentioned are on the assumption of a current premium rate, or what we say is an actuarial deferred premium, which should cover not just for consulta, but for the 3,000 case rates of field health which is a patient, which is another entirely separate issue, because as our E N E specialists and other specialists agree, it's not that far with what the market will actually require for payments. If assuming, and this is actually part of the commitment of the corporation to adjust, to increase at least for this year, 4 case rates, 2 for pneumonia, 2 for stroke, we anticipate that expenditures will go up. Now, assuming that we knew everything properly, and that the case rates are properly paid, and that they're paid on time, we will not have money for consulta.
Given that, what is your, what is your assumption about how much you've uh increased in the payouts if ever we do increase our case rates now? Because that will determine really how much money do you really need from Congress just to augment this?
Uh, we stand on, Mr. President, if I may, another one, I present a few reasons. Mr. President, based on the projected benefit payouts, as a result of the study of our, our services, Mr. President, for 2024, we are projected to spend 17.12 million pesos for consulta alone, Mr. President. But, Mr. President, for next year, we are targeting to shift to the COPB or comprehensive outpatient benefit package, Mr. President, this covers all the outpatient uh packages that are provided by Pila, Mr. President. Mr. President, for the projection, we will submit the uh documents as uh completed, I, according to results, Mr. President.
And yeah, we do, we do appreciate that, and hopefully, I am submitting for budgets.
Yes, Mr. President, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, honorable, yes.
Honorable, my senior, it's not right on me.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, to all the members of the company, of course, we can help magandang tumatanghal po sa ganun. Uh, firstly, thank you po, but I am just one of the pilot provinces uh for you, just in the end, um, 101 support, ano din po, 101 support po uh sa programa ng consumer, dun, dun, dun. Uh, siguro, Mr. Chair, sa lahat ng narinig po natin sa mga unang nagsanta, uh, gusto lang po ang uh, uh, ipaalala sa atin, lahat, 'yung uh, nasa constitution po natin, na public office is a public trust. Uh, nasa article 11, 'yung accountability of public officers. Public officers and employees must at all times be accountable to the people, serve them with utmost responsibility, integrity, loyalty, and efficiency. Act with patriotism and justice, and believe modestly. So, dito po kasi sa narinig natin, na napakalaking pera, na meron po ang field health, at 'yung taon-taon na binabayad po ng ating mga mga sektor, para po sa field health coverage, na inaasahan po natin magamit ng maraming tao, lalo na itong nakaraang bandenya, at 'yung mga araw-araw po na mga lumalaki sa atin, ang hinihingi ng tulong, dahil mahirap sila, at marami silang sakit, o malumha ang kanilang sakit, at hindi po natin buong matulungan. Para nakakapalihin po 'yung daang-daang bibyong pera, na hindi po natin ginagastos, o hindi po natin napakaramdam sa ating mga mama mayan, so uh, nakakapalihin po talaga na ganun po 'yung kalaking pera. I was a nine-year mayor, and halos na halos lang tumutulong, gusto po namin matulungan ng lubus-lubusat, pero hindi po namin kaya sa munisikyo, pero limitado din po 'yung resurado po ng national government, so, muli, no? Uh, kung gusto po natin maraming ang. register, kung gusto po natin marami ang prebadong sektor na sumalay, kung gusto po natin na mahisa, yung bully po ng siguro kailangan po may tiwala po sila sa atin para po makipinan po natin itong napaka-hanagang programan po. Uh, base po doon sa anarinig po natin kanina na report, lalo na po sa revenue at expenditures po natin uh sa nakaraang taon, lalo-lalo na po yung reimbursement po sa mga ospital uh at uh nabangin nga po ang insurance na twenty-seven days. Talagang siguro tulad po ng lahat ng mga uh kapwa natin, mga mababatas dito. Uh, yung di lamang po kasi yung twenty-seven days reimbursement, yung issue, I think yung maraming claims na narinje uh na pinapalahan po ng mga abogado natin, kung tapos nasasubject pa po sila sa uh mga kaso, uh pwede po bang nalaman sa lahat po ng kinikling sa atin, ilan tulad yung nakapending na hindi po pwede i-release base po sa sa pag-aaral ng field health dahil either hindi siya compliant o ang mga ano ang po policya ang hindi po niya pinokomplihi. Kasi dun po sa nabangin po yung yung one hundred point three yata yung expenses na benda here pero um revenue natin two hundred twenty-six, so yung question na po ng napakaraling pera na hindi po natin napakaramdam sa tao.
Yes, I agree, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to the names being submitted by our partner providers, we all know that there are parts of these that are returned to them probably because of insufficiency of supporting documents or inadequate information provided. There are also parts that are denied. And the national average or the acceptable average for each of these RTH and denied is three percent each. That is acceptable, this is your person, honorable representative Garcia. But we agree that we have seen an increase in RTH and as well as denied claims. And we are addressing this constantly. In fact, what the directive of our president and CEO uh Emmanuel Desma is to closely reconcile and coordinate with our partner providers. And we are presently doing this as we have done so in the past. Meaning uh we coordinate with them in such a way that we inform them, we educate them on how to reduce this uh percentage of RTH and denied claims. In all of our regions here, we have a outstanding order to constantly reconcile and embark on a teaching uh endeavor. We have a project, this is your person, which we work constantly or one-on-one with our providers. We teach them, we guide them on how to prepare claims so that when we it reaches, when these claims reach, reach the field health office, all we need to do is to uh process and pay them with a minimal, very minimal percentage for return to hospital claims and denied claims. At present, our regions are constantly doing this, this is your person, honorable representative.
Mr. Chair, we just know an indication of how much total has been denied, for example, in the last year. Or pending due to documentation problems.
Mr. Chair, person, the total, the national average, the total denied things is at five percent. And the total RTH or return to hospital things is at seven percent. And again, this is your person, honorable representative Garcia, field health would rather see uh lower rate than these seven and five percent. He would rather that that he put it at zero, this is your person. But to do that, we must have a constant coordination with our partner providers. The policies of field health are constantly changing such as the consulta. And with respect to this, we need to inform or yet teach our providers on how to properly prepare their claims. So that when, again, when it reaches field health, all we need to do is process them and pay for them. So our objective, this is your person, is not to totally put these RTH and denied claims to zero, at least minimize them and put them at a very minimal rate of three percent. That's what I appreciate, your person, honorable representative.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you for the five point seven, seven percent um uh number. But as a total amount, may I have the amount? In value in peso.
It's your person. This is your person, honorable representative Garcia, for the total amount of return to hospital claims, the amount is nineteen point nine billion.
Nineteen point nine billion?
That's right, this is your person, honorable representative Garcia. And for the denied, that is five billion, this is your person, honorable representative.
So total is around twenty five, twenty-five billion? And I think for uh, Mr. Chair, these are mostly public or government hospitals at the R H U level. Siguro para kung as po yung kalidad ng serbisyo. Palikin ko, nadami natin pera, baka tignan po talaga natin kung paano po natin talagang may babat yung pera para po magamit ng tao. Yun po yung una po kung kakaguman yun pangalan ko. Um, kanina, pinag-usapan po natin yung consulta package, which is the meat of our discussion today. And coming from the local uh nagaling po ako sa pagiging buong bayad, kadaadad ko po kung bakit, ang tanong ko kasi kanina, bakit po tayo naginirap at mag uh register? At um sagot nga, hindi po actually registration yung pinakamahal na uh yung registration po ay siguro yung isasab, madaling gawin. Ang problema katulad po ng sinabi po ng lahat, hindi po nagbibigay yung compensation upon registration. Wala akong natatanggap ang L G U upon registration. And yung ating bilang kanina na lumabas tayo doon sa target this year ng registration, uh hindi po siya basihan para po marandaman ng tao yung compensation. Kasi wala pa pong may bibigay pag ganun pong kalaming registration. So siguro yung pangalan mong tanong po, yung first encounter, kung saan po yung two hundred pesos for forty percent ay matatanggap na sa L G U level para po magano na tayo ng risk pooling at patulungan na po natin yung naranongdahan. Ilan na po yung porsyento na nakapag-first encounter doon po sa na register po natin?
Salamat po, uh, Mr. Chair. Sa ngayon po, nasa trece porsyento, thirteen percent na registered pa namang ang nakapag-F P.
Oo, so ibig sabihin nun, nasa atin na yung pera, konti pa nga lamang yung nakaregistro. Although lumabas doon sa target ng field, I think sa narinig ulit, for this year under sa registration, labing tatlong porsya pa talang po yung perang matatanggap nung receiving providers para maibigay yung serbisyo na para po sa consulta, which is a preventive or a prevention program. Di ba? Para gusto natin magconsulta package, malaman na wala siyang sakit, bago siya lumala yung sakit. So hindi po talaga nararamdaman eto pong compensation natin. And yung second encounter, pwede pong malaman, ilang porsyento na po doon sa nakaregistro ang naka-second encounter?
Kasi salukuyan ko pong pinapasok, Mr. Chair. Uh, kung basinan po sa bilang na registrado, at ang tanong po natin is kung ilan po yung nakapag-follow-up na or yung nakapagconsulta na hayas sa ating proseso, mas mapapapa po actually uh
Tama po.
One six percent.
Opo, so talagang parang paano po natin mararamdaman ng five hundred? Kung hindi po natin pa ito ibibigay, kung magingin tayo po tayo doon sa first encounter and second encounter. And I would like to share uh kung bakit po mababa yung first encounter and second encounter. Aside from mababa yung pang-register. Para po mag-first encounter, dapat po mga vital statistics makuha po yung tamili history. At sa atin yung organizational setup, ang gamagawa po nito ay mga midwife. Yung nasa R H U ang karangay. And kung ang atin yung ideal ratio ay one sixty-five thousand population, midwife to population ratio. At sabihin niyan akong sampung minuto para po ako yung tamili history ng bawat constituent, sampung minuto. Ang five thousand na population, sasabihin niyan akong apat na oras po to gagawin, araw-araw, hanggang linggo. Ilang araw po yung kalahating taon po magugunawa yun? Yung second encounter, para po magawa ito, isang daang pasyente ang doktor, araw-araw. Ang dapat po niyang harapin para magawa po ito. Ibig sabihin, hahat po ng ibang trabaho ng doktor, yung programa po natin sa ibang iba, hindi po rin niya magagampanan. At hindi po nga lahat ng munisipyo ay tama po yung ratio sa one is to twenty thousand. So parang from a policy point of view or sa I R R point of view, para po magro tayo ng risk pooling at para po siguro talagang marandaman ng tao. Baka po talagang dapat bawat Pilipino registrado, yung pagkaregistro dalhan natin at ibaba na po agad yung five hundred. Kasi kung nagro po tayo sa baba, makikita niyo po na talagang kailangang, kailangang, kailangan po natin para po sa programa. Etto po makuha po nung providers natin. And talagang napaka nakakalumpot po na kami po sa munisipyo po ng binarubihan. Sa hundred eighteen thousand na population, ang aming pong registered are eighty-nine thousand. Ang aming pong first encounter ay seventy-five thousand, wala pa po kami natatanggap na compensation. Kahit na po yung two hundred pesos or the forty percent. So tinabaho po ito ni B H W, ni midwife, ni nurse, ni doktor, ni mayor. Di ba po? Pinag-usap po namin lahat ng sektor. Ina-advance po namin lahat ng lumalapit na may sakit o may kailangan po ng ng pagdagamot po. Wala po sa aming social services, aik, samait, pero po lang na kuhan po. And siguro, kunti tignan din po natin yung consulta package coverage. Baka dapat din po, wag yung bare minimum, Mr. Chair. Sana po, di ba meron po tayong mga age-based consult packages na dapat? By fifty years old po yata, dapat may colonoscopy at saka endoscopy. Eh mahal po nun, san po natin kukunin po yun? So doon po nga sa risk pooling, uh uh nakita po natin kung magkano po yung kailangan talaga natin. Alam naman natin na ibang ibang kilad ay hindi kailangan. Pero nakita po ba natin na yung mas mga nakakatanda, yung maternal and childcare. Although covered po natin yung panganganah, yung ultrasound. I don't think covered po siya ng field health po yata. And yung other, so too, less than yung lahat po ng pinakita po natin mortality. Parang and to achieve yung health, uh human development index health parameter, which is longevity. Parang talagang unfortunately, kailangan po ibaba yung pera marandaman ng service provider para po marandaman ng bawat Pilipino. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, honorable President. Uh, before we proceed to let off now, this is your presence, honorable, may di po at along this street po po. Uh, yes, Dr. Ludo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And maraming salamat po sa ating putiging representative, Brasa Batahan. Senior Representative, Marang, Madrasia, ma'am. Maraming salamat po, katrabaho namin si Gob. Joette. Gob. Joette na ngayon, pero U H C Gob. Isa siyang co-author, katrabaho rin po siya. And ang aking namesake, the former governor, Andrew Garcia, talukay po. Um, ang ganda po ng mga tanong ng ating representative, Brasa Batahan, na sasukod po with six. Unang sa lahat, pamanting po sa hindi pagbayad ragan ng mga S A statement na alam ni Mam. Po, yung S A payments. And yun po yung priority namin. Uh, we are going to work within the month of August. Uh, yung mga conclusions dito, yung sa I P, yung intelligent match, yung master list, saka yung sa intelligent match. Yan po yung S A adjustment. And this actually the priority system enhanced that we're doing within the month of August. Sa ikalawang uh, pang-kommit po ng ating representative, yung tungkol sa kadalian ng paggo-up ng first patient encounter. Ang nakakausap rin po si Dr. Antonio Dance. Na alam ko po, ay isa kong person po sa yung Igares with Medicine. At na tawagan po kami. Kaya nga, naghihintay po yung sinabi niya. Sabi niya, Dr. Albert, yung sa Batahan, ayoko problema, yung F P, ating na pamila, ang kailangan mong punuan. Ang isang tanong po, na pinapatanong sa isang G H W, plus location of the interacia. Opo, kasi sinabi, favorite example yan, nakangiti sila, Dr. Chair, man, kasi yata nga ating vice chair na doktor, kami alam namin, calling interacia. Pero ng isang G H W, hindi ko sila minamaliit, hindi naman sila trainee para malaman na he's been ang Latin, na interacia ay nanghiraw na mata. So it is unfair to us. So, Congresswoman, Mr. Chair, you see that you have a hand okay inside. I'm heading the primary care team. So level po talaga, kahit di po gumalax sa inyo, eh, wala po mag-ayat, pero mesong, pinapatutunan po na ko. Yung team, bakit na tinggal ito? So, narihin naman po yung team. And in the forthcoming progress evolution, yung six pages na F P, magiging two pages na lang. Sabi ni Dr. Lance. Albert, bakit pakailangan ng two pages? Bakit hindi niya nagregister, swat from K I po, swat from A P O, from Polis and holding same? Kasi po, kung yung kuwa, ayaw ka na ganyan. But in the E C P N, which Batahan is one of them, umayag sila. Kaya careful na careful kami, kasi the last time that field health aid, the A P O guidance, hindi ba na hukodan yun? Pero ayaw po naming muriyun, we are compliant with all auditing rules and regulations. So we work to get every two, and they agreed that in the E C P N sites, we do try free payments. Basic compensation lang thirty percent, wala silang hingi na F P, that's gonna happen po in Batahan. Sa ikatong, actually, kapag na po pala, yung pong palabas ko i, endoscopya, di ba po ang mga usip na screening? Uh, Mr. Chair, ito po kasi ay mga inpatient services. So there will be case rates, actually. Uh, and endoscopye is covered by a particular procedure code. Uh, in fact, ang ating mga gastroenterologist, pinagabi po din yan, first screening. Wag na, ang mesong osasidus yan, my scope po, kasi sa primary care po, pero familiar po kasi issues. Ayaw lang po natin ang mangyari na magkaroon ng tinatawag natin na patient recruitment. Because the last time na magkaroon ng patient recruitment para sa mga kanerata, umabot sa pain point. And condition of the pain part, that's in a devouring patient recruitment. So ayaw lang natin ang mangyari po yun. But that's beyond the scope of primary care, kasi meron akong instrumentation, tsaka meron pong specialistan na sa loob ng hospital. But we do understand, uh, Mr. Chair, honorable Congresswoman Garcia, na yun po mga, to the best of our ability, we have been hearing this morning a definitive, negative number, the three thousand five hundred. Yun yung parang ating ceiling, hindi nga siya ceiling eh, pwede talaga mong kasi, pero meron tayong pag-aaral na three five. And it's actually part of the development process with the Health Technology Assessment Council to find out what particular entitlements for primary care should be part of that. And this is a good one taken from, and we will definitely keep it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to um uh reply to the last point. Uh, I think yung ginawang initial meeting uh with the municipal sound. I'm not so uh certain of the man, parang kulang yun. Parang yun yung parang naalala ko, pero I think that's the purpose of the sandbox, para nga makita ano yung mga pangangailangan natin para sa rollout. Pero yun, I think the three five was not, was not enough. Siguro sa ngayon, kasi nagsisimula talang tayo, hopefully ten years' time, it will be much slower. Siguro, sa ngayon, kasi nagsisimula talang tayo, hopefully ten years' time, it will be much lower. Kasi mas healthy na 'yung ating mga komunidad. Pero sa ngayon na medyo, we're entering na maraming may sakit. At, uh, 'yung mga Batahan, kailangan namin talaga ng nutrisyon, ang ganyan ng maraming mga tumutulong. Ah, parang kulang po 'yung dinay.
Mister Chair, uh, precisely the point why we are very happy working with Batahan. As a study talaga na Batahan sa atin po, kung magyara na po hindi. At 'yun po 'yung, 'yun po, I mean, in the form of this morning, uh, if we will look at the transcript, different representatives themselves have different perspectives on the amounts. We have persons, uh, in the person of Honorable Garcia saying, "Diba, that is not enough?" We have Honorable Marco saying, "Oh, that's more than enough because you know payment issues." We have persons like Honorable God saying, "Oh, but we may be different numbers." Precisely why the sandbox is limited in scope and time. And we don't want to go for it, because even here we are seeing a variety of things, which we want to back with data. So, when we face you, Mister Chair, we will be back by evidence.
Thank you, Honorable Garcia, thank you, Honorable Francisco. Uh, next is, um, Vice Chair, Honorable Peter Miguel.
Salamat po, maraming taka din mo sa lahat. Uh, una una, pasalamat po kami, dahil natin po 'yung sa trabaho sa one of the sandbox. At, uh, we were there last June fourth, na mistikan. Yun na, before that, gusto ko ng tanong po, uh, dun na po sa, um, we are here, the trust of this, of this all is guaranteed, uh, you've mentioned. Tanong ko lang bakit po, sa ikaw po kasi, sa provincial, maraming cases talaga ng thyroid cases, nasa farmland areas. Mga libisana, kahit isa na liver, I mean, a thyroid function test. Amongst the labs, kasi 'yung, diba 'yun, dinay sa ano, ITSH or FD or. And one, another one is, you spoke about inteleseya. Yung natin ay sa may liver function test, is TV endoscopy. So, yun po ang, then, we go to the sandbox issue. Dun po tayo, uh, sana po, dun po tayo, ilimit natin sa Batahan, Bahyo, Di Maras, South Catabato, at dyan na po, I think. Uh, just, Honorable, I spoke with our health officer in the province. We were, we have a quota of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dun sa province, parang hindi namin poa ngayon. And as of this day, meron na registrants around two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Oh, that's around eighty percent registrants. And as of this day, I've heard that the group, Provenor, Provenor Tamayo, already sent a letter to you, to your office. Then pwede po, ipagsak na 'yung first trans, round, ang konti natin, na seven-three million. O kahit na fifty million na lang, to start the ball rolling. Hindi ko sagay, dahil sandbox na rin lang kami. Yung na natin eh, ito, let's make this a benchmark. Pakita natin na magsisimula na the result excited sa totoo lang. Aki kami na, isama kami with the Secretary of Health sa nung important. But, pangalan na nga 'yun, almost buto sa tayo by next week. So, uh, yun na lang, uh, my message is, let's, let's start the ball rolling in those sandboxes. And, uh, sana po, may bigay na tong fifty to fifty million or so. Para makita natin kung paano paanda rin 'to. Uh, on the government side, itong five hundred pesos, malaki 'to. Because wala to sa kanila, first, and the same patients over and over again. Bibigay niya kami ng additional pa. If we will compute the three hundred and sixty-eight thousand registrants, a total amount to one hundred and eighty-five million. Additional one hundred and eighty-five million for the province, distributed to all, uh, LGUs. Malaki 'to, maraming tulog. But on the other hand, kausap ko naman na isa, ang taipigan ko may ayaw ng hospital. Yung ano po 'yung recent status na itong, uh, consultant pockets. Ang una lang sabag niya kanina, ano po problema 'yun? What case, sabi niya, nagagalit 'yung tao. Dahil the expectation is, once gumawa na ng, ang primary care physician natin, ng lap request. Missang biyan dun sa thirteen, uh, laps na, 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 na pwede. Yun, nagagalit na na 'yung tao, 'yung pasyente. But, but hindi kasama ito, may request ni doktor, eh, basically ito. So, ngayon, ang mangyayari, private institutions hesitate to enter to this. Kasi una, sinabi rin nila, hindi ito to 'yung sixty days na kaya. At sila, eh, how much, oh, ganyan, sabi niya sa totoo lang, bro, humabot na ng one thirty, one, one eighty days. Parang, may important 'yung bill, field health bills sa kanila. So, eto ngayon, igehesitant sila. Now, paano po natin, masasabing, bawat Pilipino, ramdam ang kanusungan, kung hindi natin i-involve ang private, just, just in the case of South Catabato. We have a total of three hundred and sixty-eight, but in fact, we are a union population province. So, may kulang pa tayo na around sixty percent. So, for them to feel the health, uh, services that is, that is government, dapat we have to involve the private sector. But how to encourage them? Mahirap kung ganito ang nangyayari. Uh, let's say for a multi-specialty clinic, sa totoo lang, papasa dito, eh, 'yung may established na nasmote specialty clinic. Magkatupok practice to rin, ano na man practice sa atin. May isang attorneys, may kasama, bedja, may surgeon, may OP, may specialty, may ENT, and OCA. Yung problema nito, tapo pumunta dun sa primary care physician digan, yung next, paano to 'yung next gather, 'yung aloa consultation, uh, wouldn't be covered again and again and again? So, 'yung risk pooling natin, na kanina 'yung picture lima sa pasyente, pero sa totoo lang, 'yung provided pass will be coming from twenty thousand registrants. Nakukonsilin ito kung itong pasyente, ako ulit-ulit-ulit-ulit, lumadating, uh, mabigat din ang kaso. At may referral pa sa katabing door lang. So, yun ito 'yung, takot sila, takot sila, as I would like to quote my friend, na sabi niya, mahirap to parin. Pinapasa 'yung burden sa private clinics and hospital. Yun namin ito. So, the bottom line po, probably is, the issue about, the, uh, kagaya na, ready ko is seven fifty. And the mode, 'yung first mode 'yung kanina, eh, sabi niya, pwede ma-extend to nine hundred. Why not, we'll take it higher, about a thousand, sa para siguro magiging paratabol, eto sa mga primary practitioner. And probably for them to be secured, best way really is to give them the on end, bilék agad, 'yung total amount ng registrant, eh, thirty percent na. So that at least they have this money on hand, alam nila paano laro ito. So, the bottom line is, we have to wait for soon. Ito, B, B type or in, prepaid na sinasabi niya. So, walang hindi prepaid ito, walang manibigatan ito sa atin. If still, the type of paying, the private institution is through reimbursement. Eh, wala talang mangyayari, dahil hesitant na sila, eh, hindi nga nababayad ang hospital nila, eh. We have to remember that those practitioners, or having this mode especially, sila dito 'yung orders ng mga big hospitals. So, may trauma na sila dun sa hospital nila. Eh, ayun na lang, mga trauma pa dito sa multi-specialty clinic nila. That's would, uh, sila na pwede magqualify sa programming. So, again, uh, yun na nga, here po po, uh, bilisan natin na may download siguro. And we have to be aggressive and trust itong B-type clinic na prepaid. Alam ko, there is audit issue, coa issue, but, kung meron namang pala, pwede namang pala merong front end ibibigay pera. Why not trust and audit at the end of a consulting division? Ibigay na muna 'yung pera, then audit later, kasi nadita na rin. Auditting issues, binigay na rin dito sa type B, diba, na i-audit at the end. So, why not, without, and there is some time para ramdam ka agad, sa investment. No matter, ramdam na ang bago ng Pilipinas, siguro pa wala natin 'yung ating, uh, mechanism and, uh, processes, yun po.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, eto kung 'yung pinapapunta ko eh, pag 'yung taga-san box, yun ang tanong, hindi ko na pwede sabihin na may coa issue, kasi wala na coa issues sa sandbox eh. But that is my way of saying that precisely the answer, Mister Chair, with a question of Honorable Doctor Peter Miguel is, we do have to pay, and that is actually part of what corporations are working on, na nilangang patuloy kami tumas. Sama si Doc, si Honorable Miguel, na since the signing of the resident agreement so. And, uh, pinapasa pala rin 'yung kumpuhan, usapan din sa competition. Kung tama't tama po 'yung sinabi, yun, meron laman po provider, ng mga doktor, 'yung sinabi, pare, ang hirap ito, kasi kami 'yung pagkuha, sa health financing, 'yung po talaga 'yung sadya ng competition, ibinasa 'yung financial risk duol sa provider. Hindi po para tanggapan sila, ngunit para siguraduhin na ang bawat trustusin, bawat na voloryo, na hindi po order nila, kailangan talaga. Hindi ko sinasabi na lahat ng doktor ginagawa ito. Pwede, alam ko ni Doctor Miguel, ni Doctor Gatto, na maraming doktor, order ng order, ng kuwan ng mga test, hindi naman talaga kailangan. Hindi po ako ENT, pero alam ko po na maari po kataluhan, na hindi talagang gawin ang pain, hindi na nasprayin 'yung biopsy sa lahat ng mga pasyente may bukas sa leeg. Ngunit, kung hindi ko sinasabi kailangan ng doktor, kung ang isang doktor ay gustong kumita, eh, baka maporder siya. So, ang ginawa po lang sa seven ng competitions, pilasan natin sa doktor, 'yung desisyon. Sure ka ba, Doc, na kailangan mo 'yan? Kasi kung kailangan mo talaga, i-order mo 'yan. Yun po 'yung unang sagot. Yung dalawa, we fully agree Congressman, uh, Honorable Miguel, uh, Mister Chair, na 'yung reliability and consistency ng field health. 'Yun po mga tanong, Honorable Congressman, ang mga tanong na nauna akong mga congressperson sa, paano kami magtiwala, eh, kung hindi kayo makabayad on time? Kaya 'yung muna po namin sa aming system enhancement, in particular, 'yung primary care, uh, project management team. Hindi ko po, bumusakan na rin. Yung TCB, sana wala po, na meron ba mga, nakasmile of Congresswoman Garcia? Kasi 'yung TCB, meron pa kaming roughly one hundred thirty something. But ma'am, sir, Kong, uh, Mister Chair, sabi ko, this has to be paid ASAP. Because I am not convinced Chief Exec is to sign on to consulta. If we are not paying what we should have paid them five years ago. Yan na, ganun 'yun to, nako sa team, ma'am. Pero siya, ganun ko sa management, ating iwan upruals. And the management is very supportive. Our COO, our CEO said, that is a priority action that has to happen, they have to be paid. That is the second question po, on the reliability and consistency of payments. How can we be to accept if we cannot pay on time? So, we're working on that, Mister Chair. Number three, we are so happy to hear that South Catabato, ang bilis niyo naman seven, eighty percent na 'yun kaed. But that is exactly the behavior that we want our LGUs to do. And that is also the reason why, uh, for the report, uh, Batahan, South Catabato, and the other LGUs went through objective criteria. Hindi po to parang ang arbitrarina, eh, siya niya, siya na no. There are actually maturity levels, the DOH has a local system, maturity levels scoring system, that tells us, sino 'yung may established na systems? Sino 'yung makakayan na napapagnaten, ang nakayan na nasa South Catabato? As the, as our suspicion sa magaling na LGU to ayun. So, now, the, the ball is passed on to us, and that's something we will be working on. Finally, Mister Chair, 'yung pong mga laboratory, I agree, yung inteleseya, inahadat natin, pero wala tayong, pardon mo, para sa ating mga kababayan, 'yung pamili lang kasi ng mata, ay isang silyares na maayron may problema sa atay. At ang ating atay, para malaman natin, kung siya ay magalaw hindi, meron po may tinatawag ng mga test na SBOT, SBPT, or ASKALP na kinukuha sa tubo, at meron tayong po kayang tinitignan. Hindi po siya kasama sa ngayon dun sa ating thirteen na laboratories na nakalista. But Mister Chair, this is something which has to be discussed, the standards of care. Kasi even, uh, leading practitioners like Doctor Tuki Dance will say that there are certain lab tests that you don't need to do to everyone. Meron po, Congressman Garcia, eh, kasi we work very closely with Doctor, with Doctor Tuki Dance. So, we have to balance all of this, Mister Chair, and we thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Uh, Doctor, uh, thyroid function, thyroid function?
Yes, H, P four, yes, Mister Chair.
And then, alam naman po, natin ay nila tere-request, but at least includes, included siya, inclusive 'yun pala. Kasi pag hindi siya nandun, eh, di may natan po 'yung pasyente still. Eh, tubos sa RAS for the level, eh, four, eh, four three, so yun ang problema po natin, pag di natin naisama. Now, uh, dun naman sa registration po, sa totoo, kaya-kaya na raw maginig ninety-plus percent. It's just that may mga problema po 'yung along the way, kakaan ng global registrants. Yung hospital, magre-restore ng sarili, 'yung LGU magre-restore rin, ito ganun, natudoble. Kaya, we are the process of, uh, streamlining and, uh, uh, reading out all those, uh, to model. Uh, we will see, if, uh, registration, ang hirap ngayon ng government namin, kung pwede, magbigay na kahit ang pera, as fast as possible. May suwag siya in terms, to 'yan, na para mapabilis. So, then we can really see how this takes work.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable.
Ang hirap na po, ang hirap na po pala. About the spiotox exam or TB, kasi po, uh, it's a AAA, feelingan ba, hindi na, sobra na feelingan eh, it's been defeats. Since you is our late president, my mother is a type of TB until now, TB is there, pwede pa, isama na natin 'to. So, risk that can heal Filipino nation out of TB. Natagala natin 'yung, uh, iba-ibang ano eh, malaria ata, or, uh, ano 'yung mga ibang diseases. But, but TB is still there, so pwede po, isama natin po sa laboratory.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and to give the committee a assurance that you're speaking with someone who is very realistic. Actually, kasama po 'yung skin ko may sa acid past na sila. But, that is no longer the standard of care for TB detection, it's already the gene expert, the, the, including acid based. So, in fact, nun na rin ang gilis tayo ng thirteen, kausap, diba muna, hindi na tayo up to standard, pake update 'yan. So, ganun, ganun po 'yun takbo, yun 'yung mga challenges na hinaharap po namin of operational level na, feel now, we have to keep up with the times. Kasi kung bakit tayo nagbubayad ng AFD, eh, ngayon, mababastos diyan na, posible bang free, ay dito, kasi baka nagco-provide ng DOH sa mga cartridge. And just to put it on record, that even 'yung ating mga dating, dinami, tapos ng pandemya, wala na tayong state of public health emergency. Ano nagawa natin sa isang katerbang PCR machine na kinhadat natin sa buong bansa? Simple, change the cartridge, use the TB cartridge, use the HIV cartridge, and we will actually have a related detection. So, we, we thank you, Mister Chair, for the opportunity to bring this to the fore of the Committee on Health.
Thank you, uh, just a follow up. Do some thyroid function test, uh, before we, uh, together. Uh, is your answer considered, yes?
Mister Chair, my answer is, uh, we will defer to the Health Technology Assessment Council, which by law is required to evaluate if exposed to that.
So, it's maybe.
Yes, Mister Chair, yes, maybe, maybe, yes.
Thank you, uh, not, uh, the last, the last, the last, Honorable, uh, Christian, Christian, there you have, is now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Ang ganda ng takalipon sa ating members of community and mga representatives of field health. So, um, given the discussions within are very, uh, enlightening and, uh, we're given the real picture that marami pong, uh, savings on field health and these, uh, funds. So, concerned po, kasi recently, I've been having a dialogue talks with, by different mayors and, uh, by different MHOs in my district. Say in the province of Ternop, we recently have, uh, built five new mega RHUs. Three more problems nga namin regarding jan, is 'yung accreditation. Kasi nga, many of those RHUs built in our province, eh, na, na, na use, is a four-class municipality, third-class municipality, and some problem nga is 'yung overhead, diba? Kasi hindi, hindi biro, 'yung para ma-credit, as I heard kanina, kailangan one doctor, uh, X number of nurses, may midwife, para ma-credit for field health. Eh, sabi sa akin na MHO, eh, ma-operate muna namin 'yan, pero overlapping manpower, pero hindi kami accredited. So, is a subsidized 'yung LGU operation. So, ano ba 'yung pwede natin gawin para magwayat? Kasi baka, para ma-cover nila 'yung needed manpower, then will probably take them, what, two to three years para ma, ma-provide you a certain budget requirements by establishing mga different manpower. Doktor, kasi, additional five hundred thousand, those overhead, and FPTS limit na raw sila or something. So, minsan kami, we also work with the province, kiniheran sila ng mga, uh, medical health manpower, pero hindi accredited. So, what do we do then? Do we give them a grace period, or ano? Um, so that's my first concern with field health, the accredited, accreditation of these new RHUs.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, thank you, Mister Chair. At, uh, ang galing naman talaga ng tanan, na actually, Mister Chair, kamapon po, nasa distrito ako, ni Congressman, yeah. I was meeting with the Ternop Provincial Hospital, and the director was there. And also, uh, sina Doctor Boy Mangatas, the former PHO, and, uh, sida 'yung, 'yung grupo nila'y pangalan is 'yung CILP sa KIP. Why am I mentioning? Why am I mentioning this in to the report, uh Mister Chair? Meron tayong grupo ng mga specialista sa Ternop, uh, sila ay mga, mga surgeon, mga entomologist, uh, ophthalmologist, si Doctor, yes. E M E, si Doctor Mangahas. And they wanted to discuss precisely what we are discussing now, consult. Nung ang gayun, uh, Honorable, yeah, uh Mister Chair, 'yung mga bagong RHU nga na hindi mapaa-credit. And this was my informal yet uh, technical advice to them. Kasi tinatalo rin 'yung CILIP sa kit na nang nagmimeroon nila. Sabi ng mga specialista, pwede ba kami maging primary care provider? The answer is yes. Because uh, right now, uh, we are not yet requiring certification uh, until twenty twenty five, uh, certification as primary care provider. Pwede po silang mag-sign up, ang importante nang po is ma-establish ano ang relasyon nila dun sa mga RHU. So kung maari kung tagalin sila, hindi ko po alam, uh, it might be a job order or whichever. Contract na alam ng ating accounting and uh, budget ops ng provincia na. Sila ay magkakaroon ng on paper linkage dun sa RHU. Ang aming accreditation department, kapag namin na 'yung program na 'yun, masasatisfying ang requirement na kailangan mo 'yung contract. Do they have to be there eight hours a day, seven days a week? Not necessarily. Natapos ko nga po, sila sabi ko sa kanila, kung si Doctor A ay may three hours on a Monday, Doctor D another three hours. Hindi magkakalay siya na accreditation, kasi ang pagkasuna sa amin guidelines is. One doctor or one full-time equivalent doctor per twenty thousand. So 'yun po'y natin, pwede natin i-tatipatip. Ika daw po, uh, Honorable, yeah, Mister Chair, kung ang problema naman ay kapulangan sa laboratory po or kapulangan sa botika. Pwede niman service level agreements. One of the questions that I've always been asked, 'yung mga mobile diagnostic, may rule ba sila sa consulta? Lalo na sa mga geographic device to build and developmental areas. We have been advising, uh, esteemed colleagues, uh, your, your esteemed colleagues Mister Chair, Congresswoman Caroline Tan Chi, who is a with the civic party list. Uh, kumaguro sa ating lab for all na first lady na actually ma, pwede mong magkwagrap ang SLA service level agreement. Between the consultant provider and the mobile diagnostic. Kailangan na po talaga na may kabirmaan na napusa, usap po, that is between the LGU and the lab provider Mister Chair.
Okay, so um, thank you for answering that, that question, Seguro. Um, at least, uh, maritime direction for representation. And also my second question is, um, 'yung, 'yung sa paghi-ko, 'yung sa mga barangay, I was talking with mga BHWs. So anyway, since it was discussed during ang kanina, 'yung uh, 'yung first consultant, 'yung first consult, diba eh? Nakakausap 'yung mga BHWs, minsan, sila ay 'yung nag-iikot dahil alam naman natin 'yung mga kababayan natin talaga. Ididelay nila 'yung pagpunta nila, pag-checkup nila, eh talagang ayaw nila. Magpa-check dahil ayaw nila makamalam 'yung mga condition nila, but for private healthcare, this is a necessary step. So, tayo ba't ibigay man natin konting incentive ang mga BHWs or Phil Health para magdala ng mga pasyente? Kasi laging nga, baka sinasabi ni ma, abunado baro sila. Sa pabasahe, papagat na sila ng mga uh, ng mga pasyentes, RHUs, or mga hospitals na.
Then, thank you Mister Chair, and uh, the response to the question is, hindi na po. Ikinan ang Phil Health, kung paano niyo gagamitin 'yung competition na inilihin namin. Kung ito po ay ididigay, dilat isang allowance or whatever it is called para masupplement 'yung ating mga PHs over him. That is between uh, the facility po and the PHs over him. Before po kasi, pagkatangasanayan natin na may guidelines si Phil Health, nakalagay seventy percent to the facility, thirty percent. Sa batas po nating ngayon sa universal, we are actually explicitly prohibited from prescribing guidelines sa ating hand. So it is up to the facility, kung paano niyo po gagastusin 'yung ating ibigay. I, I acknowledge that in areas like electricity and uh, mas mauula, kasi kung masuming. As soon as ang sagot na namin si Congresswoman, Congressman Miguel, na mabayaran namin 'yung, ay, 'yung number, fifty five point two million. Big bang na ano, pwede na niyang ganitan po 'yun, uh, sa South Cota Bato para bayaran 'yung mga vision, para makikagan. Pero hindi nagkikidin na ng Phil Health, kung ano 'yung gamit dun sa um, na 'yun.
Okay, thank you for addressing the question, thank you Mister Chair.
Thank you Honorable, yeah. Um. Talk naman ang last. Uh, that was easier than really has to be for you have. And uh, and we had, uh, was able to clarify the obligation. But after the presentation today, we're not going to have an ongoing uh, na ito. So, uh, uh, right now, the consulta package is limited to. Primary care facilities. Like RSHUs.
Not necessarily Mister Chair, meron po na 'yung mga hospitals na registered as consulta providers.
Anong level ng hospitals?
As high as the, Mister Chair, I, I see it like this, kasi IDA dapat di, pero they are allowed.
Ah, okay, so, ilka sa pros, from RHUs to hospitals?
Yes Mister Chair, okay.
So, are you envisioning that all RHUs be primary care facilities under the consulta package?
Definitely Mister Chair, kasi dapat inilin sumasakto sa MOOE. Kung bagay 'yung capital expenditure is LGU tsaka, so, eh, 'yung sa H F and DOH. 'Yung operations, operational expenditures sa consulta ay may to on the guy.
So your target, target number of uh, primary care facilities is, what, ilan, collect? Uh, five thousand?
For this year Mister Chair is two thousand five hundred.
So, so probably one hundred, that's the type population. Ah, how many uh, primary care facilities is necessary? In first, there are one of the best, uh, the consulta package, we're limited hundred percent.
The, the ideal and real answer Mister Chair is all. Primary care facilities, so we should not even have just a subset, kasi dapat lahat siya. So uh, this is me, really myself, but all.
Dapat po ng RHU, dapat ideally should be accredited for that. So we have two thousand five hundred plus RSHUs in the countries today.
Yes Mister Chair.
Okay, so, aside from the two thousand five hundred plus the hospitals that you were referring to. How many primary care facilities do we need? So that we will be able to implement hundred percent the consulta package?
Uh, I do not have the exact numbers. Roughly based on PSA projected population Mister Chair and applying the ratio of one fifty thousand. We're looking at a rounded up number of five thousand six hundred.
Five thousand six hundred. And right now, we only have seventeen percent.
Right, combination, Mister Chair, uh, accredited facilities po, Mister Chair?
The, the, yes, accredited facilities, how many are?
Kung government po, ang kitan natin, one thousand nine hundred twelve, which if we divide out of the five thousand six hundred thirty four percent, palang po.
Okay, how about the one thousand nine hundred government?
Total, one thousand nine hundred, twelve, one nine one.
How about the private?
Private po is two hundred forty nine, two four nine.
So around two thousand?
Two thousand one hundred sixty one, how about?
Five thousand.
Six hundred, yes sir.
So, my question is, how many years are, uh, is, are you envisioning it to be completed? You have, you may reach more than five thousand six hundred uh, primary care facilities. Para ma-implement hundred percent 'yung pagkunso package?
Ang hirap po lang ngang Mister Chair, and uh, binagad nila po ang pagkakataon para magdili ng konti, para bumili sa aking mga dalire para compute. Kaya nagawa po namin na pagkasal ng one thousand three hundred facilities from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. And then, uh, noon pong twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, ang nadagawa po namin, uh, sana magbalik na libo, four hundred fifteen. We, we see a trend here, na nung nag-launch po 'yung program, siya may bubulusong 'yung pagkaas. Pero ang challenge po kasi, as with every program, kapang tumatagal, medyo last na tayo na last night, wala na na si last night, dalawin pa tayo sa five thousand six hundred. Pero sir, I, as, it's a safe answer to say maybe five hundred facilities per year, that's a very conservative number. We can actually go beyond five hundred per year po.
So if we go by uh, five hundred a year, uh, to be able to reach two thousand, I don't know.
Five thousand, almost, so five years, five years, okay. Period, it is, Mister Chair, it is, uh, and of course, uh, as we say in health, parang, that's, that's already too far off, we did it yesterday. Uh, in, in our quest to over all five thousand six hundred, konsobihin natin five hundred per year. Wala natin 'yung sabihin na natin ideal, 'yung mag, maraming pasyente, 'yung pinaka-accessible. Para sila talaga 'yung, kung baga, kasi nga, bawal Pilipino, ramang kalusugan dapat. So, kung baga, wag natin, ayaw natin sabihin na, miuwan na natin 'yung magandita facilities. Pero, the larger your catchment, the larger the population that you serve, the better in the eyes of Phil Health for us to assist you as a priority.
There is a why I was asking is because, of course, everybody here at least na, maganda talaga ng program ng consulta package. Because that they want to let the public know, the realistic expectation. Kasi na 'yun, ang, ang news is may consulta package, meron ng different gamot, may different consultation, may different laboratory na. But uh, realistically, kung ang limang taon pa. Bago natin maachieve, at least almost hundred percent. 'Yung population, mga, mga karesebito, ganda ng ganda ng programan, and, so. Five years is a.
Is a realistic right, Mister Chair?
At least every year, at least five hundred uh, new.
Accredited.
Accredited uh, uh, primary health care facilities. And uh, five hundred, you're saying five hundred for?
Me, right, Mister Chair.
Uh, ang, ang ikat ba to, ang five hundred for the entire population. Pray, niya, say, you know, in one thousand, in one thousand catchment population, five hundred, that's one thousand, five hundred thousand.
Yes Mister Chair, ako, ako.
Only thirty percent of those. Uh, one thousand. You may consult this offer.
On, on average, uh, I, I wrote na, pero sa begin, I wrote it po, ako, one hundred. Pwede lang sa.
So 'yung five hundred, hindi naman limited, 'yung five hundred lang pray. Ang ganda ng itin.
Yes Mister Chair, definitely.
Tama 'yung, I think I agree with uh, si Gonggo, Gonggoles na, enough, I see. Very enough, not really sobra-sobra, pero, kasi 'yung majority will not need. Those to need to also. So 'yung na full na budget, 'yung five hundred thousand na 'yun, will be utilized by only thirty percent, or a little more than thirty percent of the entire population.
Yes Mister Chair, alam po 'yung purpose kung bakit 'yung may mga, uh, agad na nung turni, Kong Miguel na, I P. 'Yung mga interventions, kasi, we will have a monitoring and evaluation framework, an impact evaluation, para masagut po 'yung tanong, talaga bang spot na, oh, hindi. Kasi uh, we, we respect the Chair's opinion, of course, Konggo's opinion, na it is enough. But again, we, we heard that even among representatives, mayroon iba na sinasabing taas na. So para makita natin talaga, kunin at hindi pa nga sa Bataan, sa South Cota Bato, et cetera, para maggroup natin, is it, round, is it, namin.
So 'yung mga ongoing, or ongoing ngayon, implement, uh, be implemented ngayon ng consulta package? 'Yung, 'yung funding, 'yung payment, ay on time ba?
Hindi po, the, the, the payment cycle is supposed to be uh, one year. For those who do not have uh, problems with uh, the data, they do get paid on time. Pero, uh, let me revise, we see man, on time po 'yung payment, para dun sa mga hindi nakakain counter ng issues. But we acknowledge na nakakaroon po ng issues dun po sa ating mga electronic records, kaya 'yun hindi maparepo natin dun sa, sa adjustment.
'Yung cause of delayed payment, dun sa ongoing, uh, ongoing ngayon na consulta package, is because of. Wrong records?
Oo, it is not the same.
Maybe to.
It's not definite, it's uh, Mister Chair, but it's, it's actually the, the data 'yung naiincode. Kasi nakuin sa merong, merong spending, name, nagrebook the key, tapos the rejection of system. So we are continually working with our information technology colleagues, para 'yung appropriate programming na nagawin dapat nila, is magawa po.
So how many percent, dito sa mga ongoing, ang on time, ang payment, and how many percent are? Uh, na on time?
Mister Chair, um, I would give a rough estimate of uh, something like that. Sixty percent are on time, this is based on um, statement of accounts payable eight, inabayanan. Divided by the management, means sa sabi na two hundred eighty seven, one hundred seventy three, 'yung nabayaran na namin, roughly sixty percent, Mister Chair.
Almost fifty percent na, ang uh, I mean, almost kalahati eh.
Lambas kalahati, ko lang.
Opo, opo. Here kalahati, and hindi on time, and it is because of the records. Problem.
Kalihan po, opo.
So, I think we need to address this, kasi, the timing, the promptness of payment is very important. Hindi naman, tanyog naman natin, tanyog naman natin mga doktor, kung minsan, pero. Malit na nga, tapos hindi pa ginamay, hindi masakit, 'yung pinapaasa, hindi lumabas.
And I think, ay, parang supaya, napapaasa, hindi naman, eh, 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 eh. Yes Mister Chair, at uh, for the record po talaga, masama talaga 'yung napapaasa na hindi naman boko, or isana, ano manggarahan. Lalo na sa consult, so kaya ayusin po natin, ayusin po namin, Mister Chair.
So we need to address the, the, the payment, uh, the timeliness of the payment.
Yes Mister Chair, it is so.
Or being able to encourage private practitioners, or private uh. Clinics, or private hospital to come in and uh, join the program of uh, Phil Health.
Yes Mister Chair, many of my own classmates who are also consultants, keep uh, joking, na, ano bang gagawa, great eh, na mga ano po, kaya, again. So, even on the personal level, medyo nakakahiya ako, so kasi nasabi ko sa kanila, give me a few months and let's uh, work on this and let's start moving.
Pero mihan naman ang mga doktor, hindi naman mo kang pera, pero okay naman, ididelayin ang bayaran.
Pwede, Mister Chair, 'yung mga bills po dyan, nakilang bayaran, ang hirap po magpumulog po dyan.
Okay, and uh, 'yung, I, I, I got a statement from uh. Uh, attorney Ellis Santos, I'm a little bit concerned, where you mentioned there is an increase in the RTH related to hospital lately? Mister President, that's correct, uh. Well, the ideal, based on the. Past experience of each person, the ideal rate is three percent RTH and three percent denial. But at present, this has, uh, this have increased to five percent, and seven percent respectively. For this increase, is uh. After the audit or during the audit, during, that's for year twenty twenty two, Mister President. So the, under the, that's the new leadership of uh, Phil Health, not.
Not Mister Chair.
He was our beloved president, joined November twenty eleven. But Mister President, we are constantly addressing this uh, RTH and denied things. That's why I've been a constant reminder, be, be ready issue directive to address. Based by constant coordination with our providers, adapting training, ITCs. Helping them prepare things that when it reaches, when it reach Phil Health, there is something else to expect them. Again, uh, we are, we have discussed many times with our partner providers through the Philippine Hospital Association. To be happy, and we have addressed their concerns. And at present, we are constantly working with them, Mister President, so address particularly this RTH and denied things, Mister President. Yes, because during our meetings, I always hear from your office, that, well, I'm with them, it's a payment. Uh, on time, we're, we're inducing the turnaround rate, et cetera. But when I talk to health doctors or some hospital owners, lilita na na sinasabi. Uh, madami pa rin ang, definitely delay on payment, et cetera, so I'm a little bit confused. Uh, on one hand, you're saying that internal payment is uh, uh, there is nothing, another days of internal payment. And yet, I hear from the, the medical community, uh, difference, uh, so this is.
Yes, sir, I mean, uh, earlier statement of the turnaround time is based on the data, the details of Phil Health. But as to the concerns of our providers, we are addressing them through constant meetings with the Philippine Hospital Association. That be happy, as well as Philippine Medical Association, the difference.
Thank you, uh, may paha po din, uh, tinabaleng kanina ni Honorable, uh, Kuwan. Uh, may pangako din, uh, tinapon kanina me, honorable, uh, Kuwan. Uh, pwede daw bang isama ang, uh, dun sa labradorian, uh, DNA marker for cancer?
Mister Chair, uh, uh, I, I give a sign, kasi, uh, in my background, I'm also a molecular preorthologist by training. And, ang DNA markers po kasi, meron kasing combinations screening na parang multi, multi-epic, maraming iba-ibang cancer fighting screen. My first question on my mind, and this is just me personally responding, is, do we even have the facilities to do it? Uh, to my knowledge, uh, we change about three years old, uh, house, called si Doctor Veloso, Bill Veloso, of the labor of voice in one forum. And kasabay kami, but at present, the service is very expensive and is only available in a certain version, uh, private, uh, institution, state hospitals. Does DNA screening, uh, within, the question which the HSTAC has to answer is, will it actually be cost efficient? Kaya mayanin ba napag na DNA screen tayo, mas maabot itayo? Maybe the answer could be yes, but, uh, we don't know, and it's actually each doc who will be able to answer this question, mister Chair.
Ilan ang mayroon na, na facilities that can, uh, do this procedure?
Mister Chair, this was, uh, you know, webinar around two or three months ago, and a rough count, po, ang, tinanong ko sa yung tanong ko na exact question, na parang multiple, uh, screening using a DNA, parang nato or apat na nyata, and I think most of them have already metromandla. So, even if people do say, assuming that it is positive, but pinasok natin sa benefits, mga taga metromandla lang ang maghi-benefit, tapos magkakalatay ng M V D. So, these are the names that we rely on the HSTAC, uh, Health Technology Assessment Council or DROSA.
Uh, and last, my last question, uh, dun sa, um, accreditation of primary healthcare facilities uh, sa consult package center, uh, one of the parameters kong, pa, pa, um, para ma, para this meeting, based on the population and of course on the G I A. Uh, may I ask if, uh, my, my beautiful district is the one, uh, pasan mo ba, um, pasan mo na ba, sir, kung mo na, mo na, ang districto?
Mister Chair, actually, on the criteria, want to establish, uh, facilities, kung baga certificate of need, I, I will defer, uh, to the U H C. Kasi tinanong ko yung, uh, determining, kaya naman po, kasi natin yung six and listy po, we will, uh, appear, hindi naman po yung arrangement natin. But we, we do not have the information, kasi, yung certificate of need based on cash, hindi po kami yung naghandel ng, mister Chair.
Hindi, kasi ako sa, uh, booking mo, and, uh, it's a, uh, anyway, so, nobody knows here, uh, what time is it starting to be here, sir. Like one of the years, priority areas. Yes, uh, Ase, uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mister Chair. Uh, we will be confirming with our Health Development Bureau, whether the emphasis on the priority areas for, for this needs. But if in case it will be part, it will be, or maybe with, uh, health facilities, three already centers bureau. So then we will be able to help you if you are to establish an outstanding.
Thank you very much, Ase. Yes, uh, honorable, mister Chair, and so for the schedule of this concern, but I'm a priority area, mister Chair. Thank you very much, uh, very, uh, uh, statement from, uh, we are, uh, as well.
Mister Chair? Yes, uh, honorable, I, 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 involved po ng P I, I involved po ng mga societies, medical societies, as far as information, kind of, the specificity of only to, uh, just to, to be a primary care provider.
Yes, mister Chair, uh, even, even as far back as the legislation of the U H C law, which led to, while you're helping consult the discussions now, the specialists and all the specialty societies have always been involved, the P I A S, the Red Organization, and also the specialty societies, uh, I mean, decisions, we, we uh, Philippine College of Decisions, whether as a society or even their members, may gusto, mister Chair.
Kasi, bang, nakikita ko po dito, uh, I'm trying to look into, to involve, dayangang doctors, those who are not specialists yet. Kasi sila yung pwedeng panganatili rin, primary care physician, yung mga specialist kasi, matoto lang threat sa kanila dun. Once they are in their own system, mayer, kakainin yung primary practice nila this much, look at it. Maging primary care physician na lang sina, sa isipin mo, seven hundred, tinanong, tadi, tadi, na, 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 or this is the thing na, 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 na. Nakikita ko, we're going to encourage new ones, new doctors, ever reducing doctors, to form a group, group practice, or maybe a kind of, uh, social responsible, or social responsible other part, or, ano, an, a, kasi other part. Dahil pa ka na, there's some, some time for our Filipino, uh, patients with my, uh, so, ang tanong ko lang, kung sisimula pa kami now, gano'ng ako, taklob dito, please, we can enroll ang six, tapos saan, tama na. Meron kami, tab kami ng law, kami, how soon, if we really have the, nakaprevided putting up, how soon, if we really being part of this package, yung na, ano kami na enroll, paano, gaano kabilis? Months, three months, six months?
Thank you, mister Chair, uh, uh, respectfully receiving the question, kaya mapabilis ang accreditation, nangisang private sector M V P. Um, I, I don't have the exact number now, but, uh, looking at the requirements, as long as they are all in order, it's just a matter of applying for accreditation at our, uh, if, if I may differ, uh, I realize that the Vice President, uh, Nico is, uh, here. And, uh, from a field experience in N C R, um, you know, you know, mister Chair, we may find out how fast it is to accredit a credit.
Uh, doctor. Yes, good afternoon, mister Chair. Usually po yung accreditation po, uh, kapag po kaya to priman docked na sa requirements, hindi po na tatagal ng one month po yun. Usually nadalay lang po dun sa completeness ng mga requirements, kaya na tatagal po. Ang, ang declaration po sa region, yung, ano, nangyari po yan, for accreditation, one time or two times in a month. Kaya pwede mo one, bigyan one month, ma, ano na, ma-acredit.
Uh, sorry, hindi ko alam yung other things, but my question in mind is that, once meron na kami, akaridid na kami, commit pa yung magaan at nung enrolls? Or bibigyan na lang kami ng list nung L G U, nung, then you will know when you may know?
Mister Chair, in response to that, the, the registration can be assisted. The provider itself can actually look for the enrolls, uh, the, the L G U can also facilitate, kung may duko isang L G U provider. Pero, spock link po, the, 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 sorry, the private, uh, the private, um, consulta provider can actually lalo na ngayon dun sa portkaming parties namin, talagang meaningin namin, we call it social marketing. Pinagkaray ba namin ito sa patient recruitment, kasi ayaw namin mag, uh, run ha shot dun sa, ano eh, dun sa, so may partuin sa, so dun sa, lalo na nung polisiya, inikilala talaga namin na social marketing of consulta is different from patient recruitment for inpatient. Kasi, parang, pag nagmarket ka ng consulta, actually, hindi pa bababa yung gastusin ng field health, mas mapababa nga ang gastos pa kapitation eh, para sa inpatient. So, to answer the question, mister Chair, yes, the provider can actually, uh, do the advertisement, the marketing of, uh, services, parang damitan siya. In fact, yun ang inaasahan namin, in an ideal system, na maranak natin providers, paggandaan ng kalidad, mas maganda, mas magaling yung doktor ko, mas maganda yung clinic ko. Dito nga sa akin, mapalistro, kasi ang bawat Pilipino, kung meron siyang mga kapitation, para siyang nadalakad na, ma, masamang pakigtan, pero, yung design eh, para siyang nadalakad na incentive. Nagiging incentive siya, bigyan, dito pa sa akin, kasi maganda yung kalidad ng aking service, maganda yung aking clinic. Kaya, ugo na siya sa, yun po yung design, mister Chair.
Other question, can, can a patient register in more than one catchment area?
Uh, mister Chair, no, a, a patient should register only with one provider.
So, so if I, um, register say in Batanes, but, uh, how my time be in Manila, I cannot go to a primary healthcare facility. Yeah, I cannot enjoy the consulta package in N C R.
Yes, mister Chair, you will not be able to, uh, be paid for by consulta if you are not in your catchment area, mister Chair.
Isn't that, isn't that, uh, impractical? Mister Chair, this is, oh, I'm, I'm sure, there are a lot of people, uh, who have two or three, uh, residences or, when they show their, their child.
This is precisely the reason, mister Chair, perhaps why our legislators, who legislate the U H C Act, would provider of choice. It is up to the patient, the affiliate, you know, to decide, saan ba ako sa delas, sa trabaho, or sa, sa bahay. So, hindi, hindi pwede, kaya nga, uh, nun na sabi sa akin, na i-auto-register ka, na sa buka, hindi pwede, kasi dapat make choice. Baka, baka resident of Batanes, pero ang trabaho ay sixty percent of the time, metro Manila. Kung gusto niya mag-register sa provider ng metro Manila, dapat pwede, and, yes, pwede.
Mister Chair?
Uh, yes.
Maybe just a follow-up with your, with your query, I think, correct, uh, from the primary care provider network, uh, meron tayo in certain system. Pero meron talaga in second level of referrals, where it's not na yung consulta package, where you need to be referred to specialty centers or others. Then, the referral system, the health provider network referral system, is in this naman. I think, I guess, in our communities, we are, we should be assured that each constituent, uh, somebody is, uh, registered, uh, is being taken care of by the primary healthcare network, which with referrals and more was, uh, among the providers. Uh, may, may options of, uh, services na hindi kaya ng sa refer to others. And then, yun nga, when you have other needs, that there are specialty centers that you are referring to, in the overall health, kaya provide to you.
Thank you, honorable, uh, I, 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 nadalaw ako sa implementation, once, dudukdoktor, parang, dudukdoktor, once accredited na po, and I'm seeing patients every day, gusto na ko makakasingin.
So, pag, kaprevid na po, uh, in other words, nag F P E na siya first patient encounter, ano po to, kung, ito?
Private po, private.
Private, opo, so then F P E na siya, uh, this becomes an issue of generating what we call the SAC, the Statement of Accounts Payable. Uh, if I may, if I may differ again to our Vice President, uh, in, uh, N C R, um, siguro po, uh, restating the question aside po din, how soon can, on average, can, uh, compliant, uh, SAC be, uh, paid?
Um, usually po, kapag ka nagkaroon ng, uh, first patient encounter, yung R H U, yung, ano, primary care, uh, provider, consulta provider can bill the field health monthly, monthly po. So, yung, uh, F P E po nila for this month, pwede po nila to bill for this month, so monthly po pwede mo bill.
Yan ang tanong ko.
First patient encounter po yun, para sa first.
Yan ang tanong ko po eh, kasi, technically, we'll have to do contacts with, uh, labs, with nurses, so do then expect to be, may finalista nila, under a month or two, so, saan na din, like, wait. Kaya po nangyari, really want to pursue this, kung magbigay dito eh, may ko, ano pa, sa mga, diba, sa caliber of, thank you po.
Yes, mister Chair, and if I may add, it's precisely why, it is our duty, uh, still that has been, to make sure we are reliable and consistent sa payments. Kasi para tao dito sa Tagalog, para, para magrisk, yung isang private entity na kakasa po sa business na daw, kailangan sigurado kung are recover po, yung kulang ipapalabas ka ng investment. Kasi nga, eh, kung, kung, kasi, at alam natin na dumadating ang payment, which is our goal, and what we're working on, probably, we'll become more convinced to enter this particular business, so.
One case lang, a possibility, what if this group of doctors has a mobile clinic? Can register one person from this locality, then two, then namasakod na ring to you, then may treat them as their own patients to the years, twenty-five?
So, in this specific example, mister Chair, uh, yung kung mobile clinic has to have an agreement with a consulta provider in a particular area. The mobile clinic will be acting on behalf of the consulta provider. So, ang tingin ko namin dun is, dun ba rin siya nakaregister, dun sa consulta provider of that area, opo?
Any more questions for the members?
I was, I was in dialogue regarding a tarla, once will you, uh, upgrade your next batch of sandbox products? I was having a dialogue with our, uh, mayor of the tarla, where he scored very well with our, uh, where our, our residents, uh, scored, uh, we were not voted as tarla problem, so, we're inquired.
Thank you, mister Chair, um, uh, this is, uh, a decision for management, uh, so, the way that the Philippine sandbox policy was adopted, it was, uh, uh, there was a deadline. But, um, the hot off was in, in application for one year. So, uh, we, we see, or I particularly personally see that, within the next probably six to eight months, uh, related po dito sa tanong ko, kung what is kind na, so pwede niya i-expand. Yung saluk po is, give us, uh, service maps at least one year to test this out. But siya rin, hindi naman tayo mag-oopen na right after one year, before the one year we to go. Magkakaroon ng kuya ng discounts po rin, and, and the policy will happen. And we will, uh, the, the circular is, uh, twenty twenty-three dash eight, po yon, nagkakamali. Um, yun po yung panang preview, so our, uh, colleagues can, uh, alam mo na bataan is, out to the lot yet. They can review na, eto pa rin yung style ng field health sa ongoing na sandbox. If and when the corporation decides to expand already, probably, we're going to pick up the best practices from that, and open it around maybe six, eight months from now. Kasi, naksisimula pa lang po tayo sa anything.
Thank you.
Okay. Any table motion?
Mister Chair, if we consider, uh, the.
So then, as a motion to adjourn, to be seconded, carrying objection, we, uh, feeling, we can help with, uh, our adjourn. Uh, thank you very much, our guest today, uh, very comprehensive, detailed explanation, and if you wanna attend, I think, I think, uh, you wanna attend, uh, clarify and rest assured, uh, this are coming, uh, this, who is the one, uh, the program, the consulta package. So, our other side runs on the.
Thank you, mister Chair.